Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, October 30th. We are coming to you this evening from the Savage Center. I'm going to ask everyone that is in attendance to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So our first order of business is approval of minutes. In our packets, we have four sets of minutes. We have our business meeting minutes from October 16th. We have executive session minutes from September 25th. And then we have our public, elementary school public forum minutes, both from September 14th and October 8th. Are there any questions on the minutes discussion? Anybody like to make a motion to approve minutes? Do we want to take them separately? Because you technically can approve minutes even if you were not at it. But so it is up, that's why I was waiting to see if anybody wanted to take them separately.
I don't feel that strongly.
Motion to approve these all sets of minutes.
Move by Kate. Second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes five to zero. Yes, for clarity, since you said that, and anyone who's watching, Robert's rule says that as long as you read the minutes and you understand the minutes, you are allowed to approve the minutes, even if you did not attend the actual meeting. Just want to be clear. Second item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Luff, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, ma'am chair.
Fabulous. Next item on the agenda is our warrant report. So this week, I signed warrants in the amounts of, and it's a little shorter, and $75,584.25, for a total of $2,250,433.57. Are there any questions on the warrant report this evening? Great. Alright, so moving on to our next item is public comment. As a reminder to the public, you can access public comment in several different ways. You can pre-register for a link to our meeting by calling the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting. You can also call to pre-register to put your name on our public comment list. You may also come to the Savage Center the night of our meeting and write your name on our public comment list. Is anyone here for public comment this evening? Mr. Luff, did anyone pre-register for public comment this evening?
Not tonight, ma'am chair.
Wonderful. So at 7:12, I will declare public comment closed. Okay, so we'll move right into our next item, its appearances. And we have Ms. Lisa Yu, not going to do it, here to give us an HR update.
Thank you for having us. So it's been almost a year since we've gotten to talk with you. And we have some pretty good updates, I think. We've been working with a lot of you up till now. So we're going to go through this pretty quickly and then just let you ask any questions or give any clarification that you have. So we have our presentation right here, which you hopefully have seen. The first is the org chart. I know that even as little as five years ago, you had kind of one person that maybe was doing benefits, another person that was handling some paperwork. This is your team now. It's eight people dedicated to helping the schools. While each person generally is cross-trained across all the different areas, each person has a responsibility that they specifically focus on. I'm going to draw your attention to two of them that are especially for you. And that is, you have a school liaison, that's Janice, as many of you know her already. And then we have a full-time recruiter. She does recruiting for the town and the schools, but I'll tell you that a majority of the recruiting that I do is for the schools right now. So that's a really exciting position that we've added. And Elizabeth has been with us for three months now, has already made a significant impact. She just got married this past weekend, so she is not here. We're hoping to introduce her, but she's off having a wonderful time in Aruba. So what these eight people do for you is everything listed along the side, recruiting, personnel actions, record-keeping, technology. We run the gamut of HR responsibilities.
So in addition to the HR staff, our team includes the business office. And we're certainly very thankful for their collaboration. But we also want to include Priscilla and thank her as well, because she really provides lots of insight and keeps our work flowing very smoothly.
So similar to most HR offices that you have seen before, there is kind of this life cycle, and we support the staff throughout this entire life circle. That includes attraction and recruitment, onboarding, development, retention, and separation.
So for attraction and retention, with regards to marketing, HR is increasing our online presence, and we plan to attend more events to extend our reach. As far as advertising, we're increasing that. In fact, we're in the process of preparing signage. And we just need to get approval from the selectmen, and we're going to be placing it in various high-traffic locations across town. That's going to be for advertising for sub and parapositions. And then applicant tracking. We are working on leveraging more and more technology to increase efficiencies, especially with regards to the hiring process.
Once they've been hired, we recruit them. We then have to onboard them. Up till now, this has been a very paper and time-intensive process. Lots of signatures, waiting for the superintendent to sign off, passing it from person to person, multiple files. So we're really trying to make that more efficient with electronic onboarding, eliminating duplication of data entry, really just trying to eliminate that wasted time. We're also considering some candidate onboarding systems. We're currently using Adobe Sign. That's a great first step, but there are some other systems that we can use to help with that process. I know we've been using ArcZed to look at policy, make sure that people are actually following up on that, improve that integrity, and really work on reporting, so we can report back to you some of the differences that these changes are making.
Next is development. The big thing we're working on right now is wellness. So we're being very proactive in addressing the different programs and supports, such as the Employee Assistance Program. And we're pleased to be able to tell you tonight that the school wellness committee has merged with the town wellness committee. And that way, we'll be able to reach more people and be able to participate in more programs. So Ryan Quigley is the school chair, but now we have our town departments working with him. That includes light, that includes library, fire department, senior center, extended-day recreation. So we're going to be able to increase the outreach, and we're very excited about that. Now, as far as communication, we're excited to be included in the superintendent's newsletter. We now highlight current HR topics. So that's been a great addition, and we appreciate that.
And we're looking a little bit at conflict resolution. Safety is also on here, and I've been working together with Superintendent Luff on this safety committee and what it will look like, what it will be, what its goals will be. So we are actively looking at the safety of our employees, because that's number one. So regarding retention, there's a long list of things happening here. It's something that we really want to work on. Turnover is expensive, and we want to save money, but it's also better to hire good people and then keep them. So some of the areas that we're really looking at are communication, education, and what we can offer them, the different benefits that we can offer. There are things like headspace, like teachers probably don't know that they get a free access to headspace. Working advantage or discounts for people that work for the town and the schools. And we really want to just encourage employee engagement, make them really engaged with the work that we're doing here.
And then separation. We have created some new forms to ensure that former employees are removed from our systems as soon as possible, and also to ensure that they've returned all of Norwood Public Schools' property. We have also created some offboarding surveys and some exit interviews, and we'll be working on those shortly.
All of this is to say that we're focusing on kind of four key areas. The first is recruitment. We have a full-time recruiter. She's going to be looking at really actively trying to build those candidate pools, network with other people, work on referrals. We're looking at software solutions to try to just really get Norwood out there. It's a great employer, and we want people to know how great it is. So recruitment is definitely one of the areas we're focusing on.
And we're certainly focused on efficiencies. I can't say it enough, we continue to leverage technology, which is really central to everything that we're working on. We've already created so many new Adobe Sign forms, and that's decreased turnaround time and reduced our need for printing documents. And we're currently reviewing onboarding software options. And we are very happy that the town and the school IT departments are really working closely with us to do the identification for the proper system. And we're also in the process of increasing our supports for nutrition department and transportation. For the first time, we'll be onboarding every department for the schools.
Very exciting. I know. We're excited about efficiencies. As I mentioned, we're also focusing on engagement of our current employees, wellness, collaboration, and innovation of those key areas. The newsletter definitely helps that, but we're also going to be looking for opportunities to kind of get to know each other and let them know that we're here for them.
And last but not least, but we focus on customer service. And we've begun to meet individually with the principals on a monthly basis. And we're going to start meeting with the employees at the school buildings on a monthly basis as well. We're very excited about being able to do more outreach and kind of nip things in the bud, if you will, if there are problems that are developing or there are concerns. And Lisa has been included in the department head meetings, which has been, I think, a really great addition. It certainly helps us be more proactive in our support, so thank you for that.
So with that being said, I will say it again and again. HR is your team of eight, but it expands fully into everybody that's here. We are HR, and together, we will make this the best place to work for employees. That's it.
And I would say too, it's been a really seamless experience working with the HR department. I always love to talk about wellness when new staff are hired. And then I'm able to say, hey, I want you to look out for wellness, and it's just take care of yourself, because if you're physically and mentally healthy, our kids are better off here. And the HR department really helped with that, among all the other facets that they talked about. So very happy with the partnership, and it seems like it's grown since I've been here alone, so it's been...
I just have one question. The safety committee that you referenced, is that the safety committee connected with the negotiations?
Yeah, so we had a negotiation with you today. And we have a regular meeting that we have to have to talk about safety incidents that occur in the schools and make recommendations on how to better those. So Lisa's going to be working with us on that. I believe I asked Anne Marie to do that as a school committee member. And Jody is working with Priscilla to get all those dates all set up with the crew from the school side and the principals as well.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have...
And I do want to add that the town has a safety committee. And we meet quarterly with our insurance provider. And we get rewards for doing certain trainings or following up on certain things. Shaun attended the last meeting. So we're actually able to kind of play off of that and really take advantage of all the training and the opportunities that are out there.
Not a question, but just thank you. I think this is all tremendous. I thank you for listening to things that we talked about and raised as concerns last year. I very much wish Dr. Taylor and Karen Sheridan were aware that these things had happened. And I will probably call them and tell them, because they were advocates a year ago and Karen the year before, trying to figure a lot of this out. So kudos to your team, and thank you for listening. And I know JJ, you and Matt worked on some of this stuff in the spring. And then Shaun and Tim, thank you for continuing to carry it forward, because I think it's all really critical, and I appreciate it.
Well, as you've heard, listening is our big thing. We're all about listening, so if you have any thoughts, suggestions, ideas, we're open to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you very much for that update. Okay, wonderful. We're going to move on to our next item, which is the superintendent report. We have a couple of different things under that, so first being goals.
Yeah, if I could start with something different?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to make an announcement. Lori Simina, who's been our special director of student services for about seven years now, has announced that she will be leaving at the end of this school year, then in the contract year, to pursue time with her family. So really excited for her to do that. I just want to thank her for her dedication, for her support that she's given to the kids and the families in Norwood for the past seven years. She's really been committed to everything. And she'll be hard to replace, but we will probably start that process, I'm thinking, in January or so, just to kind of get that right spot of when folks are coming in. So more to come on that, but I wanted to let you guys know. She announced the principals this morning, so. I want to congrats to the field hockey team, who are first place in Division II, a big win. And they'll be starting their playoff tournament tomorrow at 5 o'clock. So congrats to the girls' field hockey team. I also want to put a congratulations out to students Sebastian Eugene and Lindsay Collins for being accepted at the ACDA National Honors Choir. It was announced just, I think it was Monday?
Monday.
Monday. Now, with that, they have been invited to the national convention in March. They have to sign up by November 4th. Things open up by November 1st. So with that, there will be a field trip kind of request for them coming out. So your policy allows you to have that at the next meeting, but I want to make sure that you know that I'll be coming to the next meeting, but we will allow them to sign up and get accepted for that. So congratulations to them. Jeff, do you want to say anything else about that?
I can say it now, or I can say it when I'm making the request for the other trip?
That works. We'll do it after.
Okay, great.
And the pitch for the Wellness Fair, of course. As you all know, we have a Wellness Fair that's in collaboration with the town of Norwood and the Norwood Public Schools. It will be at the high school Saturday morning. It begins at 9:00. 9:00. Please come. I will be selling raffle tickets. Come in and say hi to me if you haven't met me yet. Happy to, and you'll hear more about the gift baskets that will be given away from our lovely PTOs later on tonight. But it's an incredible opportunity to talk about wellness and make sure people are feeling good and have a really incredible day. So please come by the high school between 9:00 and 12:00 or so on Saturday morning. That's it for that part. Alright, into superintendent goals. So on September 26th, I met with Ms. Abingdon and Mr. Hiltz. And we kind of met to workshop my superintendent goals for this school year. I've attached a document that provides you those goals, as well as supplementary activities that I am doing anyway and plan to do, among many, many other things. The goals themselves, which I'll share in just a minute, are goals that are recommended from Mass and MASC for first-year superintendents. And they are different than what you would provide to superintendents that have been here for more than one year. And John Phelan, who is my coach, is here tonight to answer questions about that process. If you're interested to ask questions about that, he can help with that. But I just want you to know that even though these are the three goals that I'll be working on, and they're tied to certain standards, and there's certain indicators under each standard that you'll be rating me on at the end of the year, certainly there's more to it than just those particular goals, right? So one change to my goal document that I made today in the supplementary activity section was that I wouldn't be evaluated on those. Instead, I'll say, I'll report out on those to you. So you will receive reports on all those things. Things like the elementary study, obviously, you'll be hearing some of that tonight, and so on. So I will pop that document open here, if I can find it. Thought I had it open. It does not want to open. There we go. So for your review, the guidance about the goal-setting and evaluation process is here. It's linked in here, and I won't open that now, but I highlighted key pages on this document that shows you the appendix for the new superintendent guidance, right? So what makes the new superintendent different than current sitting superintendents? The evaluation cycle for a superintendent, right? We'll do the goal-setting. In our particular model, we will have a 360 assessment that you put in my contract that will talk about at some point how to do. I imagine that we'll do, you know, develop some questions together on what we want to have answered from the community, from the folks that I'm evaluating, from the teachers, all those constituents that can give you feedback on my work throughout the year. And we'll come back in the spring, and we'll have a conversation about evidence. The goals themselves do have some ideas for what evidence would be, so, you know, what I'll provide you to show that I met them. I will also, if these are accepted tonight, create a spreadsheet of sorts with the goals on them, the evidence, and I'll link the evidence to that spreadsheet as I go through the year, so you have it. And I'm not running around in March or April trying to figure out how to do that in the budget season and all that. So that will be my goal for that. So the actual district goals, the goals themselves, there's a district improvement goal, which is essentially my entry plan, right? I want to make sure that I give a broad recognition of every stakeholder in the community and really get a feel for, you know, the great things about Norwood. This is the entry plan document that I presented to you probably a month ago now. I think it was about a month ago or so. And that's the start of this goal, right? You'll have the entry plan. Now that the elementary study survey is done, you'll see a thought exchange go out regarding my actual questions that I had reviewed with you. So the community will be able to answer those questions as well. I will have a report of entry findings for you. And that, again, will be an evidentiary document for the review that synthesizes it all, identifies the strengths, the critical areas of need. And then in May, hoping to launch kind of a different idea of what are we going to do to move on to a new strategic plan, whether that be a bridge plan or a five-year strategic plan, depending on what that is. NISIP will say, you know, use the second year to build the strategic plan and not implement it that then. As you know, we only have a plan that's in place for one year right now, so we'll talk more about that as that time comes. You'll see presentations from me, you already have. You'll see the strategy session launched, which would be the, you know, what is the strategic plan development going to look like? And obviously, the results of surveys that kind of show you the entry process, right? All the results of the surveys and what folks are saying. They fit into categories of instructional leadership. These are the standards, right? Instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, professional culture. There are four standards that I have to, that you'll be rating me on when it comes to the rubric at the end of the year. And within those standards, there's multiple indicators that you can choose from. The recommendation is you choose two indicators to actually rate me on. So I chose the indicators here that I thought best represented the goals that I was working on. So for example, for the first one, under instructional leadership, I chose instruction and evaluation. For management and operations, I chose environment and law, ethics, and policies. And this really hits a lot of things, because this is the entry plan one, right? So I'm learning information, I'm making recommendations. So as I shared with you, I'm trying to evaluate everything that I can in the district, so whether it's staff, or organizational charts, or legal, or whatnot, it will all fall under these areas. Family and community engagement obviously is there, right? Because we're really going out to engage in the community and the families, professional culture, and which includes continuous learning and a shared vision. The second goal, which is a district improvement slash student learning goal, is really maintaining everything that you already have going on while I'm transitioning in, right? And you have a lot going, we have a lot going on, right? And so one of those things is really to make sure I'm working with the principals and other leaders to ensure that we're working towards the things that we have to be working towards, right? So the elementary study and the opening of Cokely Middle School, right? Making sure that instruction is happening in the way it should happen in the classroom, and our kids are feeling safe, and so on. So this is really working with the principals to make sure they have what they need to be successful principals in their schools, so our teachers can be successful teachers in their schools, and our kids can be successful because of it. So with that said, you know, I'm reviewing, and I have finished this now with all administrators that work for me, whether it's a principal or a director or an assistant superintendent, student learning goal, professional practice goal, and district improvement goal, or a school improvement goal, working with them. We'll do formative evaluations with them in March. And this is by late spring, conduct at least three school visits. I think I've already been to two schools, I think twice to each school already. And the first school was kind of a walk-through, a visit, let's kind of see how the school is. The second one is, hey, what are we looking for now, you know, based on the goals that you have? And how are we going to see that in the classroom? And so then we'll try, we'll try to have a debrief meeting afterwards, right? Sometimes it's in the hallway, depending on what's going on, to kind of talk about, you know, what do we see and what can we do? What would you recommend to that teacher about this? And what were the highlights and the good things that were there as well? And then I will analyze progression, all of that, and make sure I have some evaluation reports for all of them. Obviously, the things that I'll have for that, the benchmarks, I'll have the plans. I will have logs for you that show my visits to the schools. And I'll try to analyze the summary of evaluation reports, you know, on meeting and exceeding, and so on. I won't go through the standards again, but you'll see them there. Instructional leadership, management and operations, professional culture. A professional practice goal is actually the new superintendent induction program. Again, this is a recommendation from MASSS, MASCE, to really develop all those skills that a superintendent in Massachusetts needs to have, especially when they're entering. That's, you know, eight-day-long sessions of amazing professional development, completing a varied amount of assignments that really focus on the things that we need to do in the school. But we had an assignment on entry plans, different kind of things like that. And I meet with John at least monthly. So that is really a strong professional practice learning for me to make sure that I can give you the best that I can do as a superintendent. And again, instructional leadership, this one really hits them all, because we talk about them all. And then the next section here is just a supplementary activity section to be reported out on. Before, it said to not be evaluated, not to be evaluated on, but I think you're going to be evaluating me on everything. It's just as you look at the rubric, it requires you to evaluate the goals, right? So there will be three goals that you'll evaluate me on. And these, by the way, may be used for you as you create your goals, because it's something that we're kind of all working on together. So as you have that conversation, just keep that in mind. But obviously, the elementary study analysis, deciding on the next stages for the elementary model, take necessary steps, implement that model for the Norwood Public Schools, right? So we're, tonight, right, we're going to be talking later about making a decision regarding the educational elementary model for the Norwood Public Schools. On the 30th, actually on the 16th, but I have the 30th, just because I wanted to make sure, month by month. We'll decide on a timeline for whatever, implementation of whatever you decide tonight, right? By June 30th, we'll actually have transition activities in place, develop a budget for any potential changes, and act on that plan that we decided upon. Things like holding the parent forums, staff forums, the thought exchange with the feedback, analyzing the scenarios, voting on the educational model, the timeline, and implementing and acting on the plan. Obviously, facilitating the opening of the new state-of-the-art Cokely Middle School for the planned opening of fall of 2025, it's so exciting. We'll develop a staffing and resource plan to ensure Cokely has all the supports. I talked to Dr. Fackes today. We're going to have, we're in the middle of figuring out a transition team that we're going to be putting together as part of our strategic plan as well to do that. So we will have those stakeholders in place to make sure that we're looking at everything that the school committee had discussed from when we started the process to where we are now. In conjunction with the building committee, we're going to have substantial completion done by June, right? That's the idea. While coming in under the projected budget. Develop and begin facilitation of a plan for closure and opening activities for the community. I mean, there's a lot of recognition here that we have to look at for the old school and the new school. And then with key stakeholders by February, establish safety and security planning for the new building, which is well underway right now. Been to multiple meetings discussing how we're going to make sure that our kids and our staff are safe in the new building, especially with the state-of-the-art equipment and systems that are in place. Obviously, the budget development itself. We want to make sure that we are supporting the students for FY '26 while remaining fiscally responsible to the constituents of the town of Norwood. And so obviously, you've seen the budget timeline. We're going to be between January and April 2026, developing, presenting, and modifying, if we need to, a preliminary budget with the town partners. And then we're going to adopt a, and present for town meeting and bring it home in May, is the idea. And those, oh, and then obviously, supporting and implementing the strategic plan is voted on by the school committee in the fall of 2024. We have a lot of focus on that. You know, Dr. Munoz is doing a lot of work on the instructional side of that with the cooperative learning pieces and really looking at analyzing data around reading and writing and ensuring that our kids have what they need there. The investment and resource activities, Mr. Mannion is in the process, as well as Ms. Yu, she's gone already, about developing the task forces, both for HR as well as for budget and finance. It's kind of a cross-section of different stakeholders to make sure that we're looking at different things and honoring the strategic plan the way it was written. We are somewhat late in that now, but that is underway. And obviously, by June, and this kind of coincides with the entry findings and my first goal, we'll read progress and make recommendations for strategic planning for FY '26 and beyond. With that, I will take any questions, any concerns. And again, John is here to answer any questions around the MASC. any questions around the mask, mask and guidance, and NISIP guidance for that.
Any questions on the goals from Mr. Love?
I do, but if others want to go first.
Let me ask my email.
Yeah, I, sorry, I just got the pen stuck in there. Thank you, Mr. Love, for this. It's very detailed. I appreciate all the work that went into it. Kate and David, thank you for working with the superintendent on it. A couple of questions that are, details are kind of embedded in there and I just want to pull them out and make sure that I understand. So the timeline of a lot of these goals take us through the school year. Couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the evaluation cycle. I thought we were going to have that with this tonight, like we will be voting on what the whole cycle will look at. Is the assumption that we're not evaluating in the spring before the election?
I was trying to remember where we landed. I don't think we landed when we talked about it before because we were having a lot of this discussion, right? And we did end it with discussing that new people coming in, it would be difficult. But at the same time, it will be very difficult to try to squash this into an basically almost November to February.
I mean, there's three of us that are not up. So that would be enough to, to do that if we needed to shift that timeline, right?
And if we're shifting it to a little bit later in the school year, or like at the end of the school year, I think that gives some, any people who are coming on board a little more time. I feel like when I did it, because of the delay for COVID, it was like immediate. Was it?
It was for you for sure, but even, even for Joan and I, it was really, really hard for me to come into the seat in April and at that time evaluate Superintendent Hayden in June. It was really hard.
Yeah.
And I, we have talked so much in the past couple of years about aligning the evaluation cycle with the election cycle. So the same committee who sets the goals is the same committee who evaluates the goals.
Yeah.
Because I have, in my time in this chair, seen some unfair things happen when it's not the same committee evaluating when you set the goals. And I, I just personally feel really strongly about that.
I think for when I came on, I, you did it after I came on, but I didn't participate.
Is that legal?
You would have had the right to participate if you wanted to.
I think Kate, you came on in the middle of a two-year cycle for Dr. Thompson. So we were just getting like a mid-cycle evaluation. We didn't do the full process.
I see.
Yeah, I had the option in some cases to vote for specific things and I did abstain from a few, but filling out the, the form was not really an option. And it was definitely difficult. And of course, like then you get into the, you know, if there's only one person that's new, then it's a two-to-two sometimes. So you, when they abstain, so that, that can get tricky. Thankfully, we haven't run into that, but.
No.
I mean, I think you'll, you know, if you wanted to do it earlier, just not all of these things will be done by then, right? But you, there will be things that you could evaluate beyond, right, based on the timing, you know? So for example, you know, we might not launch the stakeholder piece yet, right, for the, you know, for the strategic plan. But you'll, you will have seen the entry findings, right? You'll see that detail there. So you could say, well, we'll evaluate those, those two pieces if you want. I think the, the more pressing concern is as we do that 360 evaluation we talked about, we want to make sure that people have the opportunity to really give feedback.
Yeah.
You know, the earlier, the better. For me, the honeymoon's still here, right? But I'm open to either, really. I, I think you could do it either way and we could, we could figure it out.
I mean, I think it makes sense to do it before the election, but I think that we, I think we would just need to be really judicious about it and like not, can't drag out. It can't be like a six-week process that we start so super early that.
And I would just ask that if we, if I've only had six, you know, NISIP sessions, you only rate me on the six NISIP sessions and not the eight right there in the goal.
And that is part of why I asked you questions earlier about evidence and really tying exactly what we're voting on tonight and the evidence and the timeline being very, very clear so that we know for sure what is our expectation and when, when we get to your evaluation. Totally understand all this can't be moved up to an evaluation cycle in March. But what of this could we reasonably and fairly expect for that evaluation cycle?
So what, I just want to make sure we hear from everybody, what are we thinking? We would prefer this to be before the election? I think I would because I have been in that situation of trying to do it after the election and it sucks. It's really difficult. And you feel like it's very unfair because you just don't have the, the background and the, and the information.
Then what if we had the two people that are up for reelection do it before? And if, if you're on, great. I know I'm not putting words in anyone's mouth, but if you're making the decision to run again or not, then you have that feedback and we find a way to incorporate it.
So we did talk to Glenn Kutcher about that years ago. Maybe it has changed. We could check in with him again. At the time, it was that you were able to submit your feedback if you wanted to, if you were no longer a city member, but you couldn't vote on it. So the voting and the decisions at the end of, you know, proficient, et cetera, was the city school committee.
I think you just, well, right, but I think it does get, to Teresa's point about like seeing things be funky, you know, if there is a change in membership that doesn't agree with what
Yeah.
the outgoing members said, they could, they could vote against it and, and it could, could cause issues.
But you're saying, David, to still technically hold the vote after election?
Right. So with, with whatever new member is sitting in the seat, if there is new member sitting in the seat.
I would do the April circuit.
So the new member still gets to give input?
Yes. I mean, they could vote, but like we'd have the feedback of the people that were not here. And I think that's important.
Relate it to that and also separately. Are we supposed to be discussing, maybe this is a question for you. Are we supposed to be discussing waiting goals? Because if we're waiting goals, which we've never decided to do before, but if we decide now to wait them, that also could get tricky if certain people are submitting an evaluation but don't have the ability to vote.
So we, sorry. You asked a question. But did you want?
When you say waiting goals, you mean so if you're only looking at six rather than eight visits, you're waiting it differently, that kind of thing?
So we've been told in the past by, by Dorothy Pressler, who was our field director, that we could wait goals and certain goals would carry more value in the evaluation than others. We have never chosen to do that.
I don't know how that can be done because you can't do it for teachers. You can't wait. Certain goals more, but.
I don't, yeah, if we haven't done it before though, I don't know if this is the, the year to do it.
Yeah.
John, have you ever experienced waiting goals?
Yeah, let's, let's know. Yeah, this is also why I asked about that form that we have from MASCE and wondering when we are going to agree like on all of that. Cause, cause in the past, as we discussed all this, we were like in full agreement of the timeline and if we were waiting. And there was that full checklist that we used to go through. I just don't want to vote for something tonight and then in a couple of weeks from now, things change process-wise that change what we're talking about.
Well, the rubric itself, and let me pop in here quick.
We already identified who's doing, well, he's, we are identified who's doing the process, right?
Did we?
I don't think we did.
I don't think we did.
Cool. Cause I thought I was voluntold.
Oh.
We probably were voluntold.
Which is why I thought we had discussed who was doing what.
We probably were voluntold, but.
Actually, Joan, I remember you saying, I have done enough superintendent goals. I am not doing them again.
I think we talked about it, right?
But then we never officially.
We did talk about it.
Oh, maybe that was for these.
It was for these.
That was for these, okay.
So this is the actual evaluation report?
Yeah.
Right? That you'll be rating me on?
To put it together.
Yes.
And the ratings essentially will be, did not meet some progress, significant progress met or exceeded on each of the goals? You'll be rating, looking at the instructional leadership. These are the four standards we talked about based on the goals. Unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient exemplary. I like exemplary. Sorry. Overall, someone or performance. So you look at, you look at these two together and you say, okay, so based on those, is the overall performance unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary? And then you can have comments. So.
So the main question before us is what composition the committee is going to do the voting on the goals?
Yeah.
And it has to, if it's, if it's the current, then it has to be done by the end of March?
Yeah, then it would have to be done by the last meeting in March. But that is how we've been doing it for.
Listen, I, I know and I appreciate the, the conversation. I think that we should just make the decision to be there before or after. If it's after, keep it at April 30th because that seems like a nice, that's before sort of the end of the year stuff starts to pick up. Like, I don't think we should weigh goals. I think that's not a good path to go down. And I just think the decision, and I would ask for, for you, because I'm about, you know, the two people that are up, if they're choosing to run and that's great. I think you have them do, you just get the stuff ready. They can do that stuff and will at least have their feedback. I know other people could vote on it, but there will still be three of us that have been here and done the things.
I think the only thing I would say to that is if we're looking at something like April 30th at that point, like I would say, we should just try to aim for March 30th then because it's just four weeks.
Well, the way this reads right now, it's a July 1 evaluation. Am I correct?
Yep. I mean, that's just, this is the year that we're working in, right? So that's why, may I start at July 1? So I made it that way. I mean, I could make these all say substantial progress towards, right? You know, that would be the goal, substantial progress towards the opening of, substantial progress towards, you know, the completion of the professional practice. I can do that. And that way, when you're looking at substantial progress, you can say, well, a lot of this goal, as much of the goals could be met by this time was met, right?
Right, right. Yep.
That's one way to do it as well.
So I'm just going to make a motion to kind of force it. So I'm going to make a motion that, that we complete the superintendent's initial goal cycles by March 30th. Period.
Hard stat.
That's the motion.
Second.
Second, I can't. Discussion.
Once we've voted that motion, if majority of us says yes, then are we going to continue to the discussion of what is in this document? Cause then some modifications would be needed.
So then I would add as a friendly amendment to myself, which is what I'm doing right now, that we expect that Tim will go make modifications, bring them back to us for approval. I don't know. Based on, based on this.
Right?
Okay, by November 13th because David wants that date. But they're based on these goals, basically. It's just an adjustment, a timeline adjustment to these goals so that we're accurately evaluating.
And I still would like to do substantial progress, right? Cause I don't want to skip something that's part of the actual work for the year, if that makes sense.
Kate, do you accept the friendly amendment to the?
Yes.
In my point of order, after we vote on that, are we still going to go back to the content? Cause I have other questions in these goals.
Yes. Okay. Yes, I think we should. Cause I think we also want to discuss like making sure that when we come back on the 13th, if we have a more clear timeline, right? Yeah, okay. So anything, any other discussion on the motion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Okay. So back to the actual goals document. Additional questions, Teresa?
Yeah, I, I sent it in advance, Mr. Love, so you have the question. I completely understand and respect the three goal areas. I am still reading the document a little bit differently than how you're saying it is done. So I'm under the impression that you're supposed to have one, at least one district improvement goal, but between two and four. And one student learning goal and one professional practice goal. So if I'm understanding correctly, we should have at least one more goals. There should be a total of four to six. And that seems to be the same even for a new superintendent. It's just the, these three are the recommendations of the starting point, but I believe we're supposed to still have one to three more district improvement goals.
This is the guidance that I got from NISIP as I went through this process. So I don't know, John, do you have any comments on how we normally do that?
Yeah. The school committee association and MASSS and DESI recommend the three goals. I think what some superintendents and school committees do is also seek activities or supplemental goals that I think the superintendent has provided tonight that really accentuate the embedded ongoing work that is important to the district. One of the things that I, I see often is that the community is moving forward for the whole lot of work, the new middle school, reserving elementary school, budgeting. And then we have a new superintendent come into the middle of that. And what the process tries to protect is the fact that it's in the best interest of all members of the community for the superintendent to have an entry plan where they can learn, listen, study the, the community, and then bring back that findings in, in the wintertime and say, this is what I see. This is what I've read. This is what I've assessed. What do we want to do with this information? How do we want to move it forward as the new person in this longevity of the, of the Norwood Public School? So this setup in the entry plan and the, and the goals that we have, a lot of that work is embedded in all three of those goals, especially the goal where we talk about continuing the work. I mean, you have a lot of work going on and it's, it's so exciting to open up a new school. It's so exciting to really listen, especially the way Tim has to the community about the discussion you're going to have tonight. But you'll see that, that these are just the focus areas for the first year of a superintendent. And then in year two, you will go directly to treating Tim like a salty veteran of 15 years, right?
And that's in March now, by the way.
And so this is the year where we want to slow down a little bit to go fast. We want to slow the process down, ensure that there's a match here of learning the community, understanding what the, the community wants, desires, what's to keep, what to move forward. So we recommend that these three goals are standard and that anything else that's added to that, usually that thought about, thought as embedding into those three goals. The recommendation that Tim is making is to be very transparent and explicit about what those three things are, that are the big pieces of work that are being done that just have to be stated out loud. And I think that he's done that with the three at the end of, or the four at the end of the, the goal statement.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Not against the three, but I still think we're supposed to have at least one more.
What kind of goal would you see that as being?
So I, I, under the impression we're supposed to have at least two district improvement plan goals. And any of the four that you've included as supplemental, I'll report out work, I think could fit under a district improvement. Or even the things that are activities one through four, if we don't call it out as a separate goal, to the point that you were just making, he's already doing the work, Mr. Love, and it's part of keeping the momentum going. And I, I'm just the big advocate of if you're doing the work, get the credit for the work. And maybe there's some things in those four additional supplemental activities that become evidence to one of the others. I wish we could pause a lot of the things that we have going on in the district. And I've said to you before, Tim, I don't envy your role of coming in the middle of all of this. But it is also so tied to hopefully what will be our school committee goals and our student improvement plans, our school improvement plans and our strategic plan. We're going to be talking about it. You're going to be collecting evidence. We're going to be evaluating anyway. It just seems to me to be like a misstep. Cause I anticipated to all be positive. I'm not trying to be like, ha, ha, I gotcha to anybody. It just seems that it should be rolled in somewhere.
So just, just, and I totally hear you. The, the first two goals identify as district improvement goals.
Right.
So technically from MASSS standpoint, they are district improvement goals. What I did, because I thought that this one also includes student learning in here because of the walkthroughs and the work with the principals. So I kind of made that a dual district improvement and student learning goal. That's how I established the two district improvement goals that are here. Just so you know. I'm at the, you know, pleasure of the committee. I'm doing the work. So I'm not, I'm not too concerned either way. You're going to have reports on all these.
So are you saying that the goals that you would expect to see are already in here? They're just listed as supplementals?
I want to be able to evaluate on them.
And because they're listed as supplemental, you don't feel like you can evaluate on them?
Well, it's clearly saying in the document that we wouldn't be evaluating.
Okay, I'm just trying to get that.
That's what I, that's what I changed. So what I changed there, because I saw that after your email.
Yeah.
It had said supplementary activities and then in parentheses, not to be evaluated.
Yep.
So I made a change to be reported out on, just.
So would they then be considered evidence? Cause we, we've had a lot of controversial topics over the last eight years, discussions of what is evidence and what is not. And I would just like to avoid some of those moments again. So when it comes to February and I get my individual composite and I'm sitting down and I'm writing the evaluation, am I or am I not considering those four activities and things included with them as evidenced on the goals?
Well, I, I think if you look at the maintaining momentum during transition, that second goal, right? If I'm completing the comprehensive elementary study analysis and we're deciding on the next stages of the elementary model and redo that. If I'm, you know, creating with you an FY26 budget and we're rolling that through, those are, those all fit into goal two. Right? So you Right? So you certainly could use that as evidence to say, yep, these are more, more things that he did to continue the, the transition, right? Maintain the momentum, I should say. So I, I think that particular goal in general, like, covers everything that you're, that, you know, that, that they base the bottom for. Unless you don't like what I did in those cases, and then please, no. I'm just, sorry, I have to add some humor. It's about me, so.
They're not evident.
But it's that type of conversation I'm trying to avoid happening in February, because we've been there before. And, and I, I just want us to be as clear as we possibly can, which is the guidance from MASC, to be really, really clear and follow that smart rubric of exactly what are we evaluating, when, and how. And this is an amazing document. Um, I, I'm just seeking a little extra clarity so that when it comes to us evaluating, all five of us understand the exact same thing when we write our evaluation.
So I come back to you, want to move one of the supplemental activities into the goal so that you can formally evaluate in the, in the, is that the? Yes, is that the gist?
Yeah. I don't know which one, because they're all important. Um, but.
So I would actually counter with, I, I don't necessarily think we should. So, I mean, just kind of looking through, what, I was, one of the documents that I looked through, um, for this, and, and one of the guid- guidance documents from DESI says three to six in any year for any superintendent. And it clearly says three is the bottom number.
It says four.
I have another, I'm looking at something else that says three to six.
The one that Tim linked to?
No, something, another one.
Is it the twenty nineteen one? Because they changed it.
Shut up. So, having said that, besides that, I just don't see how we could pick one of these. I don't see how we can take just one and move it up as a goal, and then the other two stay down, but they're all kind of equally weighted with how with the district and what, what, like, does that make sense that they're, I, I think it'd be just kind of haphazard and, and like arbitrary to pick one? And just say, move it up. And I do think, I, I felt like when I read this, that all of those three things are embedded in the three goals, that there are elements in each of them that you really, that.
These are all essentially benchmarks and number two, right? Number one, there are all those separate things. I would say too, just remember, you're, you're shortening my timeline, where most superintendents that have been here for a while have an entire twelve months to get these done, right? So, I just want to throw that out there as a.
That is actually a pretty good point, too, that we're, we're, we're gonna start this process in March, early March. Yeah.
Yeah.
And so there's, to add another goal is also, I, I, I just, um, so apologies for looking at the wrong freaking guidance, but, uh, about the three, I thought I knew what I was talking about. Um, but I still think that adding another one is probably not gonna be. I, I think it's, not that I want to head, you know, head just towards your exemplary everywhere, but, um, I think we get, we have a tendency um, to pile on the extras in our district with, like, because we have very lofty expectations and, um, we're very motivated and all those cliches. Um, but then I think we can sometimes, you know, um, fight or, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot by doing that.
Yeah, I feel like it's all here, and in terms of forest for the trees and the process, we have to sort of make those things agree. I, I appreciated what Mr. Phelan, is it, sorry, was saying about, um, that this is meant to build into a even more robust, uh, goals and evaluation. Um, it makes a lot of sense to me that, um, this is really meant to be informative and for things to springboard from here. If, if there's a one that we can call out and just re, reformat, I, you know, but if it's sort of doing double, already doing its duty also, I think we should just, we can probably just roll with it. Because we can, you know, again, MASC can make recommendations, but we can make the best decisions for our district as always, so. If it makes sense and it's easy to do, great. If it's, if we don't need it, then let's not overcomplicate it. Or we pass that point and return. Is it already overcomplicated?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
The three sixty review, that is brand new to all of us, um, and we have to figure out what that looks like. Would those questions only be tied to what we agree are your goals?
I want to make sure that I get a full idea of the community and the principals and all those pieces, so I would have more information coming in for that. I mean, I honestly, I plan to make sure we have kind of some surveys going out for all administrative staff, right? So this would be similar, but mine would come from the community as well, right? Um, so we would ask very specific questions around, around these goals, definitely, um, but also around multiple other factors, I think, that I feel for me, right? Because it's not just for, for you guys to evaluate me on, but for me to understand where I can improve and do better. Or continue the things that I'm doing well. So, I would, I would envision, I would like to write something that's thorough and not just focused on these. But enough data in there to give you information about everything, but also to focus on the goals that you can be evaluating, so.
Is it feasible to have those questions at our next meeting so we can approve them in advance with the final goal document? Again, the more we all agree upfront, after doing this for seven years, the easier it's going to be when we sit down to write the evaluation.
For the three sixty?
Yeah.
I'd want to have HR involved in developing that.
We need to go back. What does this contract say?
It's February, I think. We have to determine.
We said by February.
By February.
Okay, but there was nothing that was around.
Not me.
Just to back up a little bit, um, I mean, I could, I could do any of that. I think the issue is that, you know, in the next two weeks, I want to make sure that I'm focused on whatever timelines, if timelines have to be out there for the elementary study transition. Because after that, I need to get to the middle school piece and make sure that that transition team is going on. I think the development of the, of the three sixty assessment and the goals will certainly be, um, uh, a document that will be created together collaboratively, and certainly, I think we have enough time before February to do that. I want to be more thoughtful in creating it and making sure that I get the questions in there that I feel appropriate to, to, to listen to my response. And I don't want to be tied into necessarily what we decide and, and the number thirteen, for example.
Right. Yeah, I think that piece we, we don't need to have by, by the next meeting. I think that will, yeah, I, I just, I don't feel like that will be the, the problem if we run into issues. I think that.
Well, hold on, I'm gonna read you the contract that I worked very hard on with Mr. Love. So what we all agree to at this table, we all signed. Not JJ or Sean, but the rest of us. Um, so the three hundred and sixty degree assessment allows the school committee and the superintendent to request more subjective information from direct reports, union leadership, and community stakeholders. A three sixty degree assessment will be conducted in February. Not that we'll figure it out, but we'll conduct it in February.
Right.
The three hundred and sixty degree assessment tool will be developed by the committee and superintendent and tie back to the goals and objectives established in seventeen A, which is what we're talking about tonight. It is supposed to be directly related to whatever we vote on tonight. So why would we not be deciding that tonight?
Because.
Because we need to, we need to agree tonight before we can actually create that, so that according to that, one has to come before the other. And so the goals have to come before we develop.
So, I, so the activity, the things that are listed as activities, you're concerned because we're not gonna be able to give like a proficiency rating on?
I'm under, I, I'm trying to understand expectation. Are, are we giving a proficiency rating on it? Or is it included as evidence? Because we, we, again, really painstakingly have gone through this process a number of times. And I just want to make sure we're all really, really clear. What are we using to evaluate in March?
Do you expect that we'll be giving you feedback on your reports for those three things that are listed, is it three things or four things?
Four.
Four things that are listed as supplemental activities. Is that your expectation?
I would love feedback on those. The question is whether or not you're evaluating the goals based on that, right?
Evaluating the school committee, the, the, um, the goals.
Right, right. I, I, you know, when you do your, your feedback, you can provide feedback on anything. It's just when you're doing the, the ratings themselves, I would, I, I think they should be tied into the actual goals themselves, if that makes sense. And of course, the three sixty evaluation, the assessment will be created and conducted in February. Um, we'll make sure that those three things are tied in there, among other things, I think.
But your reports that are gonna be coming from those, um, supplemental activities absolutely play into evidence as some of these goals.
They do.
Okay.
So, knowing that, is that enough, knowing that you can use the information from those supplemental activities in the, in the report writing?
Yes, if that's written in the document that we're gonna give final approval to. Because right now, it's not clear to me of the way that it's written.
Okay. So this is a written communication issue that we're having, is it doesn't, it does not appear from this document that we can use what's currently labeled, labeled as supplemental activities in the evaluation of the things that are currently listed as goals?
Because it's not specifically called out as this will be the evidence?
So could.
Is that what?
Well, well, partially, and because.
My paraphrasing.
Earlier today, before I sent some questions to Mr. Love, it had said it was not part of.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That was, that was a communication piece.
Can Tim add to the document right now if he agrees, or is that a no-no in terms of process?
Ah, supplementary activities.
That's a no-no, because we still can, we still haven't voted on this, so that. And we did say that there were, you know, obviously, he's gonna come back to us next. And no, by November thirteenth anyway, because some of these, these are gonna have to be changed for time, for timing anyway. So I think, I think, in my opinion, we would, we make all of our suggestions tonight. We talked, we discussed this, and then at the next meeting, we actually do the voting.
I just want to make sure we're getting down to that. It, does that satisfy both?
Yeah, I think, I, I think, because, I, to your point, like, I, I don't, I don't necessarily feel like we would want to rate on those reports, because that's kind of goes completely against the idea of, of limiting it to three goals, and these are just kind of like recognition of, look at all the other stuff that's going on, and we need to actually work towards that, and I'm not, you know, and Ms. Love's not ignoring it. But I don't feel like reading it would be in the spirit of the entire point of narrowing it down to three goals that are gonna be accomplished in November, December, January, February, four months. But obviously, there is an embedding of a lot of those things in those three goals. And then what exactly that looks like as far as evident, like, what can be used. I think that was the piece that I think you said earlier was missing as well, right? I, I missed that, that, um, actually spelling out the evidence. Um, I thought we did that later.
Typically, it was in the same document.
Yeah.
Yeah. What I will likely do is, under some of these goals that are here, under some of the benchmarks, I'll add some of the activities that are happening. Right? So I'll add under, for example, maintaining momentum.
Yeah.
You know, elementary study recommendations will be one of the benchmarks in there, right? So I can kind of fill them in that way. And that way, whenever you do the assessment, you can then say, it's part of that.
And if we think that your elementary study report demonstrates that you're stinking at it, we can include that. Or that you're excelling at it, we can include that in the goals.
Yes, absolutely. I think that makes sense.
Excellent.
Um, and then as far as, just because we were talking about it, process-wise, I would say then after the next, um, meeting where we approve the goals, then we'll need to really start, and I know, obviously, you're gonna need to work on other things, timelines, but we'll have to start thinking about the three sixty process and because you're right, because we said we would do it in February, um, but we will need to work on what that looks like. But I don't think we can do that until we have even voted on set of goals.
Sensitise into your contract, is some of that discussion executive session?
I think, I think this, I mean, the superintendent evaluation process is pretty public.
Okay. Eve, Eve, I mean, the three sixty tool is brand new to all of us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we did say, and while it's not, yeah, evaluatable, it's to gather additional evidence.
I mean, you're looking at a document, not personnel information, you know what I mean?
Okay, right, yeah, okay, yeah.
So I thought it would be open.
Okay. Okay, um, so in that case, does anyone have any other discussion questions about the goals? Are we all clear on what we need?
I would suggest a workshop session to do that, right? Um, or a workshop meeting and a, a business meeting to.
That, that's fair.
For the three sixty?
Yep.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, I can definitely look at that. Um, is, are, are you clear?
I have my, I have my marching orders.
Everybody else is, okay, just want to make sure that we're not leaving anything hanging. All right, um, so in that case, we will move on, and we're, we're still under support, so.
We're not taking a vote on that.
We are not gonna take a vote tonight, because we still need to get the change in the timelines. We can't vote on a document that doesn't have it correct, because we backed it up.
Okay.
You get very grumpy when you can't vote.
Okay, yes.
Uh, the next I have here for you, a enrollment report as of October one, twenty twenty-four. Um, I did get the feedback on, on this report. I don't love it either. I'm gonna work on, um, figuring out better ways to make this work. Um, you know, you'll see, uh, obviously, some of the, the teachers, each of the grade levels, their current class sizes. In some cases, we have special ed programs that are within the school. Some of those numbers of students are at the base. In some cases, they're, um, uh, the, the special ed's number of students in one homeroom are kind of identified next to the teacher's name, but they're not added into that total. Um, I will bring your attention to, uh, a ten-person classroom at Cleveland. That is not actually ten, that is actually fourteen, um, students. And this is also a, um, uh, this particular, uh, for, this, this particular second grade, there was a conscious decision to have an interventionist as a classroom teacher to lower the class sizes by the principal. So that's why you see those class sizes there. Um, you'll see they're all over. This is why we're doing the, the elementary study project, obviously, too, along with the fact that we're opening a fifth grade in, in Coakley next year. Um, I will, I, I kind of did a quick review with all the principals. Um, everyone's feeling really good pretty much about the class sizes right now. Things are going well. Um, I think the one question that we have is the grade two at Ballsh right now, there's one grade level that's somewhat high, and, um, just based on the, on this, the dynamics of that particular classroom, that is something that's on our radar, uh, that we'll be looking at. But ultimately, everything else is running pretty smoothly, and we're, that's our focus right now. So I'll take any questions you have about the enrollment report.
Questions on this?
We were just discussing how to blow it up.
I know. I got it a little bit bigger, but.
I can't, I'm trying.
It's, you can't.
Can you see what Paige is doing? It's a page.
Yeah.
Not a question for tonight, but just related to this. At the last BBC meeting, they asked us if we had the October one numbers that the state uses, um, you know, for high needs.
Yeah.
Um, will we have that for the next BBC meeting?
We can have that, yeah. It's around, we were still trying to finalize it. Um, it's around thirty-six hundred or something.
Okay.
About a hundred, but, but eighty more students than last year.
Okay. Would we be able to, um, just have those, the demographic percentages at our November thirteenth meeting before we give it to BBC on November fourteenth?
I will, yeah, I can do that, even if we don't have it from what, even if the report's not certified from the state yet, we can pull that up in analytic, analytic view. JJ actually did it for me today, which was great, and we can, we can give you a nice chart and graphic.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, nice thing about the Chromebooks, by the way, Joan, is I did the whole, like, pinch, and, and it, it did get bigger.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm going to invite, are we, go with that?
Yes, let, let us move.
I'm gonna invite Jeff Kirk up, if I could, uh, for a field tip request to kind of explain what's going on.
Hello, all. Thank you for having me back.
Jeff, before you start, I'm sorry. So this, this was actually a request that was made, and it got lost in transition somewhere from the high school to here, so that's why I'm bringing it for you today, today in the superintendent's report. We found out about it Monday. We said, oh, ma'am, we gotta get this in place, so that's why it's here today.
Thank you. Um, so we'll talk about the field trip, uh, request for STN in a minute, but again, uh, to, um, talk to Mr. Love's comment on ACDA. We are fortunate to have had two of our students at Norwood High School gain entrance into the American Coal Directors Association National Ensembles. Uh, there were over five thousand entries for students to participate, and only about six hundred of them made it. Um, so it's a really big honor and a, a nice tip of the cap to the, the high school program. So I will be working on that with Mrs. Hartnett, and we'll find out more. They opened up the registration on November first. Um, so I'll know more as soon as that gets rolled out, so. Um, but again, Sebastian Eugene and Lindsay Collins are the, the two students, so congratulations to them and to Mrs. Hartnett. So, the STN field trip, and I have visited, uh, the past two years in regards to the Student Television Network trip. And it is a yearly event for, uh, students that are interested in television and media. Uh, it is a national convention. The past two years, it was out in Long Beach, California. Uh, they decided to say, hey, let's put it back to the East Coast, so this year and next year, it's going to be in Tampa, Florida. Um, and it is February twenty-eighth to March fourth. Um, the paperwork that you have in front of you is the same, uh, as it has been in the past. The information is there as far as how they're getting there. Uh, the cost, Mrs. Schnatterly has worked well over the past couple of years uh, to rebuild the FOM, Friends of Mustang Media. Um, so those parents are working to support the students. Uh, and some of what they do will offset some of the costs as well as they see fit, uh, as time goes by. So the, the, uh, estimated cost will possibly go down even a little bit more as students get involved with the activities that are available to them. that are available to them. So you will, and do not cremate me, but you know there is something that is perhaps not in your, Joan's looking at me, which is fine. This, this is one of those things that I'm still working on with our timeline versus some of the, the companies and how they, they work. So this is a trip that's happening in March, and some of the paperwork hasn't been finalized yet. Mrs. Schnatterly had reached out to her team. They have individual people that they work with, has been asking for the better part of three weeks to get this information, and she was literally put in a loop of, talk to this person, they said, talk to this person. So she came back to me last week and said, I, I don't have what you need. I reached out to the person that I got it from last year, who is part of their business department. I reached out to them. I pushed it up the chain today and said, what can you do? He will have the COI by tomorrow, is what it sounds like. So what I provided to you was an example of what the COI was from last year. It will be something similar to that. I would ask that you preliminarily approve the field trip based upon getting that at some point in time within the next couple of days.
And just as a reminder, there will be the certificate of insurance and liability from the company. There will also be, just for the folks out there listening, and for some of the members who worry about health insurance, there's also a signature form and all the medication administration, medication forms that, that says that, you know, the, the parents will be responsible for any kind of health issue that occurs during the trip. And I did ask Mr. Kirk to speak to them about making sure there's upfront payments for any medical issues that happen during the, during the trip, if they have.
I don't see last year's COI.
Last, I have it here, in case you need it.
So the one.
I wonder if it just didn't link, right?
So that gives you an idea of the breakdown, just so you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anticipating our questions.
I wasn't anticipating. It's better.
Thank you.
And they sent me one via email this afternoon that basically is one that said, it will look like this, and it's the exact same document that I presented you with, different information.
Yes, I'm not crazy. They have $10,000. I'm not crazy. The other one was weird.
Oh, the one for, the other field trip?
Yeah.
That we did, yeah, where it was zero.
Yeah, that, that's weird.
Yeah.
Did you see one?
Yeah.
That I'm not allowed to talk about, so I forgot I even said that.
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Kirk?
Not a question, just an interesting note. I don't, maybe it was always here and I missed it before, but the dates, is it always the end of February, beginning of March, or did that move earlier?
It, it is earlier this year. Last year was in March.
Because this is the first time I'm noticing a number of students would like to go but think they can't because of athletics.
Right, yep. It would have been after the winter sports season last year.
Yeah.
Or towards the end.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, that timing is like right in the winter sports.
Tournament.
Tournament season, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I know a lot of people that would just be like, eh, miss a few days of my sport, that's fine, but tournament season is, uh.
Right, and you don't know until you're in it. So you hope for the best and plan accordingly.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this field trip pending a COI that is either the same or greater as the one that we were provided with from last year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Four to zero, and one.
Five, I said aye.
No, Kate's not. Okay, stepped out.
Oh.
You're good.
That's okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
I will be back shortly to talk about the ACDA.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, anything else before we move on?
That is it for my report.
Yes. All righty, so we're going to move on to the next item is budget. Teresa, do you want to give the budget subcommittee update?
I don't think we actually have one, because we did not meet as a subcommittee since the last meeting, but we are actively trying to schedule our next meeting for next week, so hopefully by tomorrow, we will post. From the poll so far, it looks like it'll be either next Wednesday or Friday. We just got to wrap that up. And then we will be back here on the 13th, and we go to BBC the day after. So on November 13th, we can talk a little bit more about our plans for the budget balancing committee.
All right. Next item is the monthly budget transfer report. Mr. Minchin?
Thank you. You can see from the document, we've had just three small transfers. Everything was below the threshold, so we're just reporting them to you. There was a transfer between instructional supplies and textbooks of $1,990 at the high school. There was a small transfer at the middle school between their dues and their training, $82, and there was a small transfer between a district-wide account and the high school account for instructional supplies, $175.
Thanks.
Any questions on the transfer report? Wonderful. That was easy. 10 minutes, my butt. All right. We know we're not, we know.
We knew, we knew we'd make up.
I was like, we know, we know we're about to make up for that, so we will move on to the next item, which is our elementary study update.
Okay.
Well, do you want to start at all?
I just, I'll thank you for the memo that you put together, and I'll definitely give a chance to my colleagues to ask questions. I just want to thank the members of the working group that are here, the principals, and I'll just keep it short for now, because I'm sure we'll have questions that will bring things up. So I'm glad we've gotten to the state. We're here, we've reached the point.
Thank you, everyone. Obviously, tonight before you is a vote on the elementary model of instruction that we will be providing in Norwood for years to come. There was an incredible amount of community feedback that we have received, both in thought exchange, surveys, as well as parent and staff forums that we created and incurred and had. We had 538 staff and community respondents, and more than 5,500 ratings on the individual discussions that were in the survey. Really wonderful that way. I will tell you, it was about, I think it was about 56 to 57 staff, and then another 30 that were staff slash families in Norwood, just so you know that breakdown. So a significant amount from the community that came out and actually did the survey. Some, as we, as we know, did it once or twice, you know, we learned that at the forum. That was just in nature of trying to transfer the Google survey over. We had to keep it open that way, but I don't believe that happened a lot. There's a lot of different feedback in there. So based on whatever decision you make tonight, I'll come back to you, my goal is to come back to you in two weeks with a recommendation on whatever kind of timeline might come out of this. So when I get my marching orders today, I will actually draft kind of all the, the major things that we have to consider over the course of any kind of transition, things like staffing transfers, things like technology changes, things like facility moves, all those different details, and I'll line them up in a way that's feasible to, to complete in whatever timeline I do, so you can actually see that work that has to be done, to help you make whatever decision you want to make around, around timing, right? So below here, I have provided you with a tremendous amount of data and the actual decisions you have in front of you yourself. There's a supporting data section in this document that includes the surveys, that includes the parent feedback results, and also a class size analysis kind of thing that I did. I am not asking you tonight to vote on any kind of class size, and actually, I wouldn't suggest that you, that you do, but I wanted you to see what it would take to, you know, because at this parent, I think it was a staff forum, somebody said, well, what about, you know, lower class sizes? So I wanted to take that and say, all right, so what happened if we have, you know, all kindergarten first grades being, you know, 20 or less, and all other upper grades being 23 or less? What happens if we take the smaller schools like Balch and Callahan, and we say, let's do 20 for every one of the classrooms there, right? And then we do K and 1, you know, 20 or less at, you know, the elementary school, the other elementary school was 23 or less. And then I did one with 23 or less, and I'm not advocating for 23 or less. I mean, I think that principals and their, and their expert knowledge and their, of their schools, of their facilities, of who their students are and who their staff are really need to have that decision-making power to be able to do that much better for their school. So you'll see that in the recommendation that I actually have for you at, at the end of this memo. So here are the three scenarios to choose from, and we've reviewed these multiple times, so I won't go over these into too much detail, but scenario one is six K through four buildings. That makes Willet, one of the elementary schools, changes the kindergarten, and it makes the K through four school. You will see that each of the neighborhoods, each of the areas are, are, are in one section, right? So there's no overlap. There's no kids that are going from, you know, over one district area to another to get to school in the morning. So it creates that pillar of the neighborhood schools that, that folks have asked for and wanted to. It, the Windsor students here are actually going to Cleveland, so keeps that district in one area, and it balances the special populations to the extent that we can, right? So some of our higher-need students, we'll make sure that we are, kind of have a more equitable distribution of those students. These particular numbers that I'll share with you later are from Sanborn. We projected out 25, 26, so those are the numbers that I re-reviewed, analyzed based on the data that we got today. Scenario two, I'm sorry, scenario three, which is a second decision that you have, are also six K through four buildings. This is the least impact on the students of the two K to four models, right? Obviously, the least impact would be scenario zero, but this is the least impact on K through four models. Now, they both have pretty significant impacts on, on the difference, on the different areas, but this is the least of the two. You still have neighborhood schools here, but you can see Windsor here, if you can see my mark, they would actually go up to the Willet, which is here, so they would cross over the Cleveland neighborhood, which is in purple, and actually go to the Willet. And then you have scenario zero, which is continuing with the kindergarten building at Willet, and then having five grade one through four buildings. Obviously, least impact. It is the smallest staffs cost increase. You'll see that it's not substantial. As I went through the data, you'll see the data that I have for that, and of course, K continues to cross over the district to get to the Willet school. So after all the review from the feedback, the surveys, the forums, the data from the study, looking at some of the detail in the class size analysis, and really isolating, you know, what scenario in what class size assumption would work for all of the schools? And I'll share it with you in a little while, but only one scenario really worked for all schools, for working in the facilities, as well as making sure all of the pillars were also met, and that was scenario one, which is a kindergarten through grade, through grade four school. So I am recommending that you approve a kindergarten through fourth grade educational model based on scenario one. It's, again, with the understanding that the class sizes will be determined by the principal, using their expert knowledge to do that around their schools and the students. It best represents the guiding pillars that you have all put together, at least the elementary study committee had put together about those, what we were looking for out of the study, and it also really goes to the, the highlights of what the, the community was looking for through the surveys and the feedback that we got. So in the supporting data, you'll see green highlights and red highlights of the positive and negatives of each scenario. As a reminder, your guiding pillars from the elementary study committee were optimization of space, enhancing educational programming, balancing capacity to account for future growth, attempting to balance the demographics, maintaining or potentially lowering transportation costs, which, again, all the models, as we have found out, will be similar, because we have to add two buses anyway for the middle school opening next year, so that one kind of came off the table, maintaining neighborhood schools as closely as possible. So just some key feedback that I quickly pulled. 67% of all participants identified a preference for a K to four model, whereas 33% would like to keep the K, K-model with a five grade one through four schools. So where it really got strange was that between scenario one and scenario three, it was pretty split evenly. So with 35% saying, you know, we really have a preference of scenario one, and 32 for scenario three. Again, just a quick summary, minimizing disruption, maintaining community cohesion, strong emphasis on equitable resource distribution, we're, we're kind of a quick summary of the survey results as I asked that question. And the parent and staff feedback forums, which many of you were at, even the staff forum as well, indicated a preference for a K through four model, as we went through that, that model. So my recommended action to you tonight is a motion to approve a K through four model for elementary redistricting based on scenario one recommendation from the elementary study committee, with the timeline for implementation voted upon at a future meeting. So whatever you would decide, I would then go and figure out the timelines for. So the supporting data here, did a quick question, you know, what scenarios in the survey, based on all the feedback, are recommended by the respondents? And this is actually the AI piece here, just so you know. It appears that K through four model is the most preferred scenario with the key points, educational benefits of a K through four model allow for better continuity, community, and overall learning environment, and then they gave some examples of that. Equity and resources. Participants emphasized the importance of equitable distribution of resources to support across all schools, which the K through four model could facilitate. Minimizing, minimizing transitions, which is reducing the number of transitions for students, was a recurring theme, which the K through four model supports. Community, neighborhood schools, K through four model aligns with the desire to keep neighborhood schools intact, fostering a sense of community. And overall, the K through four model seems to address many of the concerns and priorities expressed by the participants, making it the most preferred scenario. Another quick summary you'll just see again, I already spoke of this one, but minimizing disruption to transitions, community focus, quality of education in school ratings, safety and accessibility. It did note some areas to investigate, which we will be investigating. What's the impact of immediate redistricting? What if we did this, you know, next year versus this year? Logistical and financial challenges, equity and resource distribution. Top five, five highest-rated thoughts, we're keeping overcrowded to a minimum, lessening transition and increasing instructional time for kindergarten students, closeness of elementary schools, keep the community, keeps the community, overpopulating classrooms, and building communities for learners with less transitions. So the assumptions that I used here in considering class sizes and models, I will say, it, the numbers include current students in special education programs that are in those schools, right? So if you see a class of 23, two of those students may be program students that are in those schools, right? So I included those in the 25, 26 projections. The current class sizes that you see, as I did a, a share of some of those class sizes and some of the backup data, actually don't include those students, right? So I just want you to know that if you have a class of 21 right now, right now, that might be 22 or 23, whereas, you know, the assumptions that I did included the students that are current, that would be in those schools if they would stay. So assumption one that I used was 20 students or less at all at Balch and Callahan, like I had shared with you, 23 or less in grades two through four in the other building. And this, I'll just explain once, but you'll kind of get the hang of it as we go along. Currently, we have 82 general education teachers in K through, K through five. We are going to be, I'm going to be recommending to the transition team, 12 of those teachers being moved to Coakley to support the fifth graders moving up, which leaves 70 total general education positions remaining. Going through the scenarios based on those class size numbers, just so you have a feel, if it was scenario one, you would need additional eight, eight full-time equivalent teachers. If you were in scenario three, you would need additional 10, and scenario zero, additional five. So obviously, fewer class sizes mean more staff to support those, those classrooms. You'll see at Balch, Callahan, and Willet, that works, right? It works with them. They can figure it out with their facilities and with their space. At Cleveland, it works. It opens up some classroom space, so you don't have art music shared, as, as, you know, as we were looking at. In Oldham, scenario one works, but scenario three does not. In Prescott, scenario one and three result in fewer classrooms to be used, so it actually does not work in Prescott, and it adds some additional FTEs. And just for your backup, and I will show this once for the community, just so they see kind of the, the data that we use to do this, act very small. So with all of these scenarios, this one's called the smaller class size. We did the current averages, and again, the current averages do not include the students in the programs that are going to those classes, but what the class sizes might look like in each scenario, based on 20 or less for all of Balch and Callahan, and then, and so on. So scenario one, scenario three, and stay as is. And so you have that backup data here, Patrice.
Tim, can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Yeah, please.
When you say, if you could just scroll back up just a little bit under assumption, okay, so when you say scenario one, 78 need additional eight FTE, that is eight FTE just at the K through four level?
That is K through four. That's correct.
So that's not talking about the opening of middle school?
Forget Coakley for a bit, 12 teachers going up. This is just focused on the, the elementary model.
That's my thought, but it is one to clarify.
I appreciate it. Yeah, because there's 70 positions to go, to go around, right?
Right.
Based on what we still have left, and that would, like, scenario one would require 78, that's that number, general teachers. Assumption two was 20 or K, 20 or less in all K through one, right? So you can see that my, my thought process here was, our littlest learners might, might be better with smaller class sizes, 23 or less in grades two through, two, two through four as well in all buildings. That would require additional six teachers for scenario one, nine teachers for scenario three, and one teacher for scenario zero. You will see that that works again for Balch, Callahan, and Willet. Cleveland, it works for. Oldham, scenario one works, but scenario three does not. It requires the same amount of space. It requires the same amount of space, it keeps art and music shared. And at Prescott, scenario one and three don't work, it actually displaces some special education programs, doesn't address music and art in one classroom. And, you know, some of the priorities of some of the schools have a certain number of classrooms they want to use for certain things, and that just produces the number of classrooms they have to use. Assumption three was twenty-three or less in all classrooms. Again, that would, for scenario one, it would require an additional two FTE, two teachers to get twenty-three in each classroom. Now, we'll share with you, there's some funny things that we can do here, you know, because some of those classes have classes of twenty-four, right? So that could actually, if you had one class of twenty-four, you could actually reduce a teacher from that. As the principals look at different data, there are options at different schools to have two, three mixes, that kind of thing, right? To use that to reduce, reduce a teacher to make sure we can support kids. And still have reasonable class sizes, right? But not have, you know, three teachers for forty, forty-eight students, so to speak.
Sorry, you just, when you say two, three mix, you mean one classroom, half second grade, half third grade? That is a model that you would find feasible?
I, I've had it before, it depends on the teachers, it depends on the structure. It's something that we would research and look at to determine if, you know, and actually, we want to bring it for you, for you, so you could see that before we even thought about it. But there are options that do work in that way. I mean, in a perfect world, we're differentiating all of our instruction in our classrooms, so it can work, especially if it's a small class. I don't know that that will be something I'll recommend to you, but there are different options for flexibility to, to say, almost have no staff needed for this kind of a model.
And that could be in response to fluctuating, you know, class size, like from year to year, we know that adjustments are currently made, but this gives us room, and those are more tools to respond to those changes, right?
That's right. So you see scenario one, it would require seventy-two total teachers, which would require an additional two FTE. Scenario three would require three. And scenario zero, we'd actually be able to reduce, reduce one, noting here that the kindergarten classrooms would be twenty-one per class. Not necessarily recommending that either, right? So I just, I wanted to share with you what the data shows.
What's happening there, yeah.
Here, Balch, Callahan, and Willet, all green, Cleveland, scenario one and scenario three are both green. Oldham, scenario one and three are both green, Prescott, scenario one is green, but scenario three does not create any additional space for them whatsoever. So going through all of those pieces, I looked at what scenario and in what assumption, I had green for every school, you know, so to speak. So that's kind of how my mind works there, and that's how I came up with the possibility of scenario one. And it meets the pillars of the, of the elementary study committee as we went forward. And that's, you know, balancing the scenario three versus scenario one. I did include current classroom size averages, they do not include the special ed program students. You can see kindergarten has an average of twenty, first grade has an average anywhere of twenty-one, between twenty and twenty-three. You have second grade classes of anywhere from fifteen to twenty-one, third grade classes from twenty to twenty-three, fourth grade classes from seventeen to twenty-three. I did add a reminder of some of the minimum positions we might need for, minimum positions we might need for the opening of the middle school. We'll talk more about that when we get the transition team going, there's eight staff members there. I did talk about some scenarios, what we're thinking we would do for some of the ways to support some of those positions, some different positions at the, special ed positions at the, at the Coakley. The summary of the data provided through the elementary study forums, most participants, as I said, share the desire for a K to four model. Most of them believe that any timeline for transition should be delayed by one year, that's just a heads up. The survey that I'll show you, the results from the thought exchange next time, you'll probably see similar data there. Many participants requested that children be grandfathered, we know that we considered it, it's not something that I would recommend or that I think we could do feasibly. Few participants shared a desire for a continued K school model, and few participants requested that the transition occur next school year. And then there's additional survey data here, the full results can be accessed through the thought exchange, you do have access to that. I'm not sure if you've been able to get in, but you do have access to that. And you can mess around with it, you can say, hey, how many Cleveland parents responded this way? How many Oldham parents responded this way, and so on, it's really neat. Again, you have the five hundred and thirty participants, the ratings, the low alignment here, that means that there wasn't a lot of alignment among the three models, right? Although there was higher alignment among, if we'd asked you on K through four or, or one through four, you would have seen a greater alignment there. And then you'll see some of the parent member scenario preferences here, just so you have it. And I can't make that any bigger on my screen, I can't. Nope, two hundred, as far as I can go. Scenario one, thirty-seven percent for parents. Scenario three, twenty-nine percent, and scenario zero, thirty-four percent, just to break it down by the community, still K through four model recognition. And not everybody answered the survey that did the actual exchange, just so you know, that's why you see some of the numbers different. Teachers preferred scenario, twenty-four percent scenario one, fifty-one percent scenario three. But again, and thirteen, and twenty-five percent scenario zero, so again, more of a K through four model there. But I did want you to see that particular data as well. So with that, I'm sure I do have the elementary study team here too to answer questions that they make them up. So when that, if that happens, you guys can feel free to come up, but happy to take any questions that you have. And I'm sure.
Does anyone have questions who would like to start discussion?
I'll just kick off and say that initially, I was going into this thinking about scenario three. And because of the raw number of fewer families moved, this analysis helped me look at things differently, and how, equitably speaking, in terms of how each school is impacted, that we really need to have sort of a bigger picture than that. And then I also looked back at some of the lines that are drawn in both of those scenarios. And scenario one's cohorts, our numbers are somewhat larger, but the cohorts are pretty cohesive. When you have groups moving, they're going to be moving together. And I think people who are at the forum understand that our administrators and the district is going to do a lot of work around, if this, if we move forward with this, there would be a lot of work done around welcoming in and establishing whatever new school community is there. So I know that, that, just that raw number isn't reason enough alone to, for me to support scenario three at this point. I just wanted to take a chance to, to remind folks that changes, though I understand change is really hard, we, we do understand that even the Willet alone has seen a lot of change throughout Norwood's history. It used to be an elementary school in the seventies, I think, or the sixties, maybe, it was peak sixties. There was like nine elementary schools, and then there was like seventy-five hundred students, I did a little digging. And then toward the late seventies, enrollments started going down a bunch, and so a couple of them were closed, including the Willet. That is all to say, things ebb and flow, right? Like it's been an elementary, it's been a preschool, then it was the early childhood center, then we, that grew too big. So here we are, and this is another evolution. Another point I want to make is that continuing in that evolution, we could be, you know, or the people at this table in ten to fifteen years might be looking at a new building study, and we know that we have some old buildings on our hands. I think the point there for me is that we don't want to wait to give our kids the best model that they can have, the best sort of opportunity they have in terms of, and staff, in terms of our educational opportunity and families and transitions. So for me, it's, though it feels like ten to fifteen years in our lives goes by like this, that's a long time for kids in elementary school, and I think there's a lot to be gained by the switch. And that's what we kind of heard from families and staff as well, so that's where I'm leaning for discussions sake.
Anything else?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Left, for this very detailed information and all your analysis. And thank you to the team, Diane, Brian, Michael, for all your, all your time and hours and diligence and care, because I know that's a lot of all those things. Academically and developmentally, I fully understand and support the K through four. Data budget programmatically, I'm really struggling, because I don't know how we afford six K through fours. Maybe we pull it off the first year, but being at so many budget meetings with the FinCom and BBC and town meeting and everything, I don't know how it's successful in the long run. And I don't know if any of you have any insight or reaffirming words to help me with that part of my brain, because that's where I'm really, really stuck. I don't know how I support a model that I just don't know the town can afford.
I mean, I'll just say, based on the staffing that's necessary for, if you're not adding staff to get to scenario one, for example. I mean, there's facility things, right, but the facility costs are already in place. Regardless of the grade levels you have in there, you're still going to have the same amount of facility costs, for the most part. We're going to do and establish kind of the best way to staff all of our programs within the district. We have a, you'll hear later about the RFP for the student service review, so we're going to try to get really efficient, but really good, and focused with our services there and how we, how we deliver them in each of these schools. So I think as we go through the budget process, we'll identify those needs, and we'll, we're going to provide what's best for our kids and be mindful of the costs that come up. But you're still running the same amount of buildings. And the staff, the way it looks with the class sizes, the staff numbers don't look to, based on what we're looking at here, don't look to increase the number of staffing requirements. The question is, down the road, if there are any fiscal constraints, what do we do then? But I think right now you'll see a budget that comes from, from you or from me, and recommendations from me that shouldn't be, based on what I've seen, too much of an increase based on what you have now.
So the model, the document you just took us through, we're not looking at between two and eight FTEs for scenario one?
No, so if I go back to the scenario one.
That's if we decide to go with those numbers in smaller class sizes.
But on the, the different scenarios, it does say scenario zero, least, uh, smallest staff slash cost increase, which implies that there is a higher cost for the other one.
That's right, so if you look at assumption three here, which is twenty-three or less in all classrooms, and I'm not saying it's twenty-three, like I said, you know, there could be ones twenty-four, and all of a sudden you have one additional classroom teacher. You would need to add an additional two teachers to be able to support scenario one. Because you have seventy positions that are already allocated to K through four at this very time, even after moving twelve teachers to the Coakley. To fill those classrooms, based on that, on that data that I shared here, you would need two additional FTEs to fit scenario one.
And how many to fit scenario zero?
Scenario zero, you would be able to reduce one.
I think that's the point, is that there, there are staff, there is staff. What's the word I'm looking for? Impact.
Cost, yeah.
Cost.
As I, as I did share with you earlier, I'll open this up really quick. I want to call up the schools, too much. Why can't I move my stuff a little? So you see some classes. I want to go to scenario one.
Forgive me if I miss this, but is there an analysis of what happens if we pick scenario one or scenario three? And don't talk about class sizes, keep the same number of staff, what does that look like?
I think you'll have less, well, if you picked one of those scenarios and didn't talk about class size, I think you would still see the same recommendation that I have, saying it depends on the principal's spot. So scenario three, for example, you would get close. So scenario one, for, I just wanted, let me get to, it's Prescott, the classrooms are those, Brian, remember? So for example, one, you have a kindergarten and a grade one, where you have, that's, actually, that's twenty and twenty-one?
That's twenty point five, we actually split the kid down the measure.
What class was it? Right, so that could be two classes of twenty-four, for example. That's what I, that's what I mean when I say if we don't look at class sizes, we might look and say, you know, rather than having three teachers for forty-eight kids, we might have two teachers for forty-eight kids. So you can get, you, there are different ways in this, in these, all these models to get to zero degrees, and still keep class sizes under twenty-five in different ways.
So the short version is we, we can choose one of those scenario one or scenario three and still keep, pick cost neutral?
There are ways to do that, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, Michael, you can go first.
Oh, Michael, yeah.
One thing I'm thinking about too is I think that as a district, we've been investing to get to the place where we are now too. And I think from my perspective at the Willet, right, it wasn't until three years ago, we had a school adjustment counselor at the kindergarten school. It wasn't until two years ago, we had a full-time principal at the school. Right, until like these investments have put us in a better place to be able to have a conversation about having six elementary schools and being able to staff them. I think, too, I want to make sure that our kindergarten students, our youngest learners, our introduction for most, right, to go and have a robust educational experience. I'm glad it's having equal opportunities to the resources that exist at the elementary schools, kindergarten.
So one other question that I have is, when we first started the middle school project, my assumption was moving the fifth graders up, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We'd instead just stop using hallways as libraries and those types of things, because that would, we would have more free space. So my question is, and I know you've already answered this, I'm asking again, to just make sure it's cemented in my head. If we pick a one or a three in these scenarios, are we still having art happening in a hallway? Are we still having basements that are, that are not, are we still using converted store rooms as the music room, for example? Do you know what I'm asking? I'm looking at it because we've got three elementary principals in the back of the room. So do we still accomplish an, an up, an update in facilities for our K through four if we pick scenario one or three?
It depends on the school probably, but I think in most situations, we will, like, there's a, like, for my school, it's like a reduction, so I would have open space. But in other schools, it may not, like, it, it's the same to watch. So it depends on the school, you have to look at the bottom number to see.
Well, I get three of you here, so in your school.
My school, I.
It works. Mr. Riley?
Let's go with it.
Yep, so in our school, there's definitely programmatic decisions that would have to be made based upon the model. So our library is in a decent place, it is in the middle of the hallway, but then you look at what classroom placements are around there. Could we fit a full library in one of our classrooms? Probably not, to be honest. Art and music, Mr. Curran, I've had the conversation, my art and music folks are interested in hanging onto their space, because they love it. That's a programmatic decision that, you know, but what it would do would take nine of my FTEs who share one classroom currently and allow some breathing room, right? Because we're opening up, potentially, we're going from thirteen genet in some of these down to eleven or twelve, opens up some space. So programmatically, it would definitely be better. Specific to your question, art, music, library are those the ones that are going to be impacted? Or I'd love to bring my EDL team out of the cottage, laugh all you want, still cottage years later, bring them into the physical building. That's a, that may be a higher priority for me than moving in art and music who don't necessarily have the desire to move at this point.
Okay, so yeah, my question isn't about those specific specials. I'm going to get my familiarity with what happens in elementary schools is most connected to the Cleveland, because that's where my kids went. And so I'm thinking about, you know, there's a library that's connected to a sensory space, all in the one big hallway, and, right? And so like, my, what I don't want to do is vote for a scenario that doesn't leave us in a better place for the non-actual, I don't know what, what's the correct word for, not their home room, for lack of a better term, right? But for all, everything else that they do, if we're just going to create six crammed schools, five crammed elementary schools, but for me, that's a why bother, right?
Cleveland here, scenario one, at least with this model, opens up one classroom to give space to art and music, and that's what Carrie had talked about, which did that. If scenario three would open up two classrooms to give additional space.
So we're still looking at a gigantic library, a computer space, all that stuff, like, in a hallway? Whereas if we go with scenario zero, that creates a ton of space within, physical space within the schools, correct, or no?
No.
No.
How much physical space? It's two classrooms, a bit?
Depends on the school.
Roughly two to three classrooms?
Could be two, yeah.
You were going to.
Anywhere from, anywhere from one to three.
Clarification, when you say Balch, Callahan, Willet, all scenarios are feasible for learning, fewer students in each class do not provide additional space.
Yeah, that's not supposed to be green. Yeah, that's not supposed to be green.
So, so am I understanding that the Bolch, the Callahan, and the Willet, if we do scenario one, three, or nothing, we're still hurting for space?
I think you just heard from Diane, there would be some additional space.
Right, because on mine, if you look at the numbers, it reduces, like, some of my, my two, five, or Willet or something, like, a couple. So, yeah, yeah, we, we don't have programs in the hallways now, but we have.
Okay, actually, I, I don't, I just thought of this now, and I've entered the forums with all of you, and I can't believe I just thought of this now. So we have the maps, right, and we have these very permanent-looking lines in the maps that say where the district lines would be based on what we vote on. But how much wiggle have we looked at to be able to re, like, so the Callahan's one of the smaller schools, to kind of like make sure that we're not overpopulating the smaller school? Or, you know, so, you know, I just feel like these are very.
One, one of the things that I might suggest to you as we move on is overlap zones at some point, right? So you're, you know, with, with the districts being this close, you can do that. So you can say, all right, so if we're, if, if Cleveland has too many students because of enrollment or whatever, then we may have an overlap zone to, about to Oldham, for example.
We used to, that used to be, I know when I, I say, when I, when I moved to this town, eons ago, I had the option where I was to go to the Oldham or the Cleveland.
I wouldn't necessarily give it as an, as an option at the beginning, but only if we, if enrollment.
Yeah, and that was what it was. It was kind of like one of those situations.
Phrased it when we spoke with Sanborn in, that they have used the idea of flex zones before. I think that's what we had talked about. And what it boiled down to is ultimately it's a school committee and district policy. So it's more of a policy alignment than it would be a suggestion. At the end of the day, the superintendent has the ability to assign schools, and I think that that's where it came into, where they said, hey, if you look at this down the road, you're seeing these areas, you want high-density areas right now. Like, oh, there's one kid in this neighborhood of a hundred miles, and that kid, we don't know where they go. You want an impact for where that is. And so if you come to the point where you're saying, hey, there's some of these areas that are naturally flex zones, you lean on your policy to say, we are gonna reassign these kids to maybe an under-enrolled school, school that has a lower cohort, which wasn't necessarily part of this, but could be something that would be under your burden in the future and under the superintendent's burden in the future.
Yeah, and you can imagine a scenario like, where, where my house is now, like, right behind me, people go to the Callahan, but like literally across the street, it's Prescott, and it's like, you can skip a stone into the backyard of the person.
I think what I was trying to get to at that very end of our meeting, what I talked was, like, preempting this discussion in terms of not picking one or three, um, was, was to enable the administration to adapt to these kinds of things. And to come back and say, like, say it's delayed, we have a year, and you guys are working on it, and you say, well, we've discovered, you know, we know with the K through four model, but we've discovered we need to adjust a line, or, you know, you know, so that the rooms, you know, to, to adjust.
That's kind of my point, is kind of like, you know, I feel like we're, we're being so very finite, and because it's been presented that way, right?
Right, right.
This is it, and classrooms are gonna be this, and classrooms are, you know, and, and I feel like there's, you know, I wanna kind of broaden that a little bit, that there's some flexibility in, in the time leading up to this, to figure out the exacts. And that's kind of, yeah, where I'm going with that, that I feel like we're getting.
That thinking wouldn't correct how it is now.
Yeah.
You know, like, we have across the district, anywhere from twenty-two in a first-grade class to probably fourteen.
Right, right.
Because we don't have any choice. When you live in that district, you go to that school. There hasn't been this, you know, at registration, if you come in and this school's full in that grade, and you have more flexibility with the flex zone.
Yeah, I feel like more recently, with obviously the transitions we were seeing with them, more, you know, transient populations of people moving at odd times, that we've had to have that discussion about, like, if somebody came in, we really can't fit them there, like, we'll have to try to place somewhere else, but it hasn't been the right part of, like, district policy that, like, this flexible zone. So that's kind of where I'm going, like, I feel like we're getting a little hung up on, like, the the class size is this, the class size, you know, the, but I feel like there's a little more flexibility than.
Well, I mean, I, I, I do, as you, as you decide, I do want you, I would recommend that you vote on some kind of a model, right?
Oh, no, 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 I'm not suggesting otherwise. No, let me, I didn't go down, I didn't swing that far.
No, I just, I mean, I think what we're getting at.
Everybody go where you want.
Building on. Yeah, Anne Marie's point is that, you know, for me, a motion, you know, something I could support would say, work with this scenario, and then come back, you know, after the planning process, present, you know, the learnings and any, you know, in progress, and if, if there were to be any adjustments that, like, to allow for that discretion in terms of the work that you guys have to do when, you know, rubber meets the road.
I do wanna, I do wanna quickly say, because I, I feel this conversation, and I feel like it emboldening people who are like, see grandfathering.
No, 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 no.
I just wanna caution that discussion, only because that is, it's, you're likely to get such an.
No, 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 I meant.
Yeah, no, no, I just wanna make sure, because I, I could just feel, I could feel as, no, no, I don't mean you. I could feel like as we were talking about this, that, that.
That it's exceptions. It's not to, that, it's more about the flex zones and overlap zones, where you would see a trend in enrollment that would cause you to say, oh, this is happening in this, this neighborhood, or these, with these lines, so we really need to maybe look at the lines here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
One of my main concerns is that Windsor goes to one school in both of these models, and that just makes me nervous in terms of population flexing and constricting.
I think that there's enough history, though, with the Windsor area. I mean, it's not that we know the population of students, I mean, we've had some increase recently, but not in general. The population of school-aged children in that area has been pretty consistent.
One of the benefits of the two schools that they are potentially feeding into the Windsor area's community is that both of those schools have a higher capacity than the Prescott currently does, right? So like, once we do have an influx at Prescott, like, there's no, there's no room to grow. Whereas, if you're looking at Cleveland and Willet, if there is like a five, seven-student difference, and they have a little more breathing room. What we've found historically is that it ends up being about a wash. We always say we, we transition about fifteen to twenty percent of our population every single year. But, you know, when we talk about it, it's like, we have thirty-five new kids, and people are like, oh, my goodness, and you're like, but we also lost forty-two kids, you know? So it's never, it's never, you know, we're always somewhere between two fifty-five and two seventy. This year, we're at like two sixty-seven. So it's never a huge swing, if that helps. And, and one question to go back, we, we did ask very point-blank to our colleagues, do any of these scenarios put you in a worse spot than you're currently in? Because if that is the case, we obviously don't wanna explore that.
Yeah.
And everybody said no. And so that's where I think you got Mr. Love's comments in there agreeing of like, this is what it might do. In those, to give you an idea, and the only person in some of the scenarios that was worst off was me, and I made that clear. But that also would play in a little bit with class sizes and numbers, it just might not work, but are doable.
So the Prescott could be deliberately looked at, those lines, you know, we could go into it, but also, I, weighing benefits, right? That's what I wanted to say. It's lost me train of thought, but I got it back. This whole process, we had a lot of people just sort of speak to what you're getting at, which is, the whole point of this is that the fifth graders are going out, and the study told us, are, we have overcrowded elementary schools. And then we started to do the elementary study, just to take a look at things, and opportunities presented themselves. And so then you start to have benefits that surface, that you then have to weigh, right? With just the, the blanket space and looking at that, and the empty, you know, the void of the fifth graders. But what are the opportunities that you get when you bring in the kindergartners, both for educators and families and students, obviously? And those, you know, we, that's why we continued with the work and are presenting this stuff because of the value of, of those in balance.
Teresa. Yeah. A lot of different thoughts, I promise they all connect. So, just, just first, and something consider, the flex zone, even though that's not specifically in our policies, we already have policies that enable the district to do a lot of what we're talking about. Our previous administration just chose not to. So I just wanna be really mindful that as we're looking at significant change and new models for our community, that we don't try to solve a problem that maybe wasn't a problem. So we do have some policies in the place that just weren't implemented. Also, supporting the kindergarten, I am a thousand percent behind Dr. Valier, I promise you. I've been advocating for the Willet, like, from the beginning. Right, Diane? You were principal when I started in the seat. And I, and I'm just very cognizant of, as we decide on a model, we don't inadvertently impact what those resources are that we can get into the schools, because the adjustment counselors, the behavioral interventionists, so many of the things that the elementary team has been telling us they need. I do genuinely worry with six K through fours, it's going to be harder to get those things in. And if you look back at the work that started in two thousand fifteen with the Abrams report, and then our long-range feasibility study in two thousand seventeen, and then the work AI three did for us in twenty-one, twenty-two, all of those things told us, and having a hard time disconnecting from this, they all told us, we need to spread our classes, grade one, grade two, grade three, grade four, across less schools, not more. And this is looking at spreading them across more. And if you go back to all those studies, it was saying that it was gonna be harder to balance class sizes. And that we would be more likely needing to add staff. And at the staff forum at the Willet, I think it was Lori Griffin spoke and said, when the kindergarten used to be in the elementary schools, we had eighteen kindergarten teachers. And now we only have thirteen. And I worry that we're gonna have to swing in that, more first grade, more second grade, more third grade, rather than less. So like fundamentally, I'm just having a really hard time. Again, like I said, like, the data, the pragmatic part of my brain, all the work that's been done up until this point, I just have a lot of concerns.
I think the eighteen came from the move in birthday, it used to be December thirty-first.
Yep, it went to December.
Year where the kids coming in were still, and then we moved it to August thirtieth.
Yep.
So that mirrored time, because the next year after that.
It went down.
To thirteen.
Okay.
And it was more of the, the children who were in that birthday window, not the school.
Got it, got it, okay. In the scenario of, of do nothing, which I know isn't perfect, but if we keep the K separate and we have five one-through-fours, I believe we will open up just organically by moving grade five out to the Coakley, three classrooms at the Bolch, and three at the Cleveland, and then two at Prescott, two at Oldham, and two at Callahan, right? And I know we're not talking about implementation timeline tonight, Mr. Love, but in the event we do choose scenario one or three, and then we decide to wait, we're still going to need to talk about scenario zero for a default year. And I just want us to keep that in mind as we're wrestling with all these details, and as the community is thinking about what, what does this mean. The other question I have, and I don't know, Michael, Tim, Diane, if you can, Brian, Diane, if you can answer this. In the study with Sanborn, was it looked at if we kept K siloed, but redistrict the one-through-fours? Did we look at that?
We looked at a scenario where we had a one-two school, right? We, we did zones. We did like a Bolch, Prescott, let's say, school zone here, and one was a lower, and one was an upper school.
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't look at redistricting, because, because I, I really do believe demographically we need to redistrict in some fashion. But what does that look like if we just redistrict the one-through-fours? Was that looked at?
To balance class size, you mean?
To, yeah.
I think early on, there was a consideration about, I have to go back to, to an accurate answer.
That's okay.
I'm not sure that we did a redistricting of one through four only keeping K. It's possible, but I don't know that it's definite.
Okay, okay.
But it's probably, because I think I remember some of those early conversations, that it was something like that would have been off the table almost immediately, because it didn't adhere to the pillars of, you know, and the transitions, and, yeah.
Right, because we know of the, you know, these are real families, real kids who have to move from their school. And if you keep in what you have, why would you move any, I guess? But we, I don't think we talked a lot about it. But we did talk about other alternatives to K to four.
Can you guys speak to Teresa's point about services and, you know, benefits versus, you know, strains on, on one, on one or three?
I mean, I know for, I think, the elementaries, and, and Michael knows, I think knowing kids from kindergarten through fourth grade, getting the eyes on the students in kindergarten, it would help, I, I'm assuming is gonna help with what we are providing there. You know, the special ed people can go and look, the EL people, they will have that connection earlier, they will look, you know, we are, sometimes even with great information coming, with, until they get into the school, they have a different, you know, and it's, you're recovering, you know, as opposed to, and just for the families, you know, being connected, you know, one-and-done BTO was really hard. One-and-done whole groups of kids was really hard. You know, having people connected for four, and we're losing a year now, right? So, so you're not even, the transitions are gonna increase, it's a shorter time frame. We used to have five years at elementary, now we only have four. So, that's what I look at.
And I think another thing, as we're talking about access to resources, specifically for kindergarten, you know, we have a fully official model, we also have now a PACS program for the first time at the Willet. And from a special education standpoint, we know that, you know, we have a population of students who would benefit from some of the special education resources and programs that exist, that are elementary schools that don't exist at the kindergarten level. For example, we had, you know, a PLC teacher from Cleveland to come over, like, and consult recently at the Willet. We don't have access to those resources at kindergarten level, and, you know, it's been a conversation that we've been having as a Willet team about how, you know, that can be a disadvantage to, to our kindergarten students.
Along with that, my, thank you, John. Trying to interrupt.
Can I go next?
Six K to four models help out with professional development, right? So I have to support Michael differently than I have to support Diane, Brian, because we're all, we're really getting different sets of data sometimes. And so having him have a thought partner, of being able to call Brian, of being able to call Diane and say, hey, what are you guys doing over here at the school for, you know, for these types of things? You know, it's, you can't call them for a kindergarten problem, really, because they don't have kindergartners. And so having that, because we're a small district, having that ability to collaborate and have a thought partner that's in it with you, because they don't have assistant principals, and so they're on an island on their own, it helps solidify more support that sometimes we can't provide, that we, we want to provide.
I just wanna say first, thank you. You know, this whole process started because it was the question of the fifth grades leaving, what do we do? And I think that sort of your work, and it speaks to the work that you guys and the professional view you brought to Sanborn and, and to this, you know, that sort of what happens is, right, a forced choice. You have to pick and choose what are going to be your pillars, or what are gonna be your guiding principles. It doesn't mean that one is better than the other, it's just you have to rank order what it is. You know, this is not, you know, this change, if we make it, is not going to be, I think, in my mind, like, permanent, permanent. It's, I, I think it's semi-permanent. I think hearing you guys talk, like, the next thing is, is that we, we do need a new elementary school. And the reality of the situation is, the town's not gonna give us the amount of money it takes. It's, it's not worth it to renovate six very, very old elementary schools. The MSBA process works, that's how we got the middle school. They looked at space, they said the best, the, the biggest bang for your buck is move the fifth graders up. You have a building that has four grades, and that, that's gonna create space for you. You know, I think that it's a real conversation, and I know I'm jumping the gun, but the town has a lot of money, and the high school's gonna come off soon, that I think there needs to be a serious consideration or conversation around, you know, going back into the MSBA. That is the trend of a lot of places, where you get one school, instead of waiting a decade, you wait three to five years, and then you go to do that. And I think that's a, a real conversation, that's something that I've lobbied for, that's something that I'm gonna continue to lobby for, because I think it's worth it. And I think sort of, bringing it back to this, again, you guys have done an excellent job, I appreciate it. I think you've given us three reasonable models, and we're faced with making, you know, a decision that isn't gonna be liked by all. It's, it's a hard decision, but I think it'll at least be a well-informed decision. So, so, yeah.
John?
So I'm gonna make a motion. I am gonna make a motion that we approve scenario.
I am gonna make a motion that we approve scenario three, sorry, ten. The reason I'm making the recommendation for scenario three is because it has the least impact. It moves the Windsor to a brand-new school, so it's not integrating into an existing school already, but it's a community that's going to a new school, with everybody going to a new school, which I think will be helpful. I think I saw on the staff survey that the staff prefer scenario three, and the parent recommendation was sixty-seven and sixty-six percent, which is essentially equal. Yeah, is essentially equal for scenario one and scenario three. So I think that will have the least, that will have the least impact on students. It will set us up for a greater amount of success. And so I'm gonna make the motion that we approve scenario three.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second for purpose of discussion.
I just have a friendly amendment, maybe that we, we look at the, the flex zone as it applies to the Prescott and any wonky, specifically for the redlined issue that you highlighted, that did not do as well for the Prescott under scenario three, so, um.
So I'm not gonna accept your amendment because
Yeah.
I think we already have that power under district policies.
Okay, okay, great.
I was actually gonna suggest that. Any other discussion?
I'm very uncomfortable with scenario three, and I've been, from the beginning, taking our equity audit into consideration. And our Windsor Gardens population, it still doesn't keep them in a home district, they still have to cross districts, and that is something I'm not comfortable with.
They're crossing either way, what do you mean, cross districts?
They would still not go to the Cleveland, they would go to the Willet. When the Cleveland is the school district closest to them, in which they could walk to if their families wanted to.
Okay.
That's a far walk.
That's a far walk, but I, I get what you're saying.
That's a far walk.
Any other discussion? All right. May I ask a question? Yes. No matter what the motion is on the table, but I'll ask it now. Mr. Luff, we still don't know the results of the student services review, and I know I've been asking you these questions a lot, but that also makes me a little nervous to vote on scenario one or three, because we don't really know what that is gonna recommend and where our special education students are going to be placed. I mean. Oh, yeah, good.
I would, I would just say that that review will come in, it will look at our special ed programs that we have, and determine what the needs are for each of those programs, whether we need those programs or something different, what the instructional methodology is. I, I don't imagine, and I, I don't think that I would want a recommendation that says, hey, if you have this disability, you're going to this school, right? Because it's, you're gonna be homeschooled to the extent that you can, and then we'll have programs equitably placed within the district, I think, that address the needs of those, of those students. So that information will come, you'll hear from the RF proposals later. Hopefully, we'll have that information in the spring, and we'll be able to make decisions based on what those recommendations are. And that will, just so you know, weigh in my mind as we are determining the timeline for this, as I make that recommendation.
I was gonna say, wouldn't that be something too, that when the study's being done with the information in hand, that we will have this, this
Yep.
format or this format, and how does that fit?
Right.
And this is just model, it's not a timeline.
Right. Any other discussion? All right, so the motion on the table is for scenario three, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that feels two to three.
So one of you three make your motion.
Motion.
I was gonna say aye.
Motion to approve the recommendation from the superintendent, and it reads as follows. We approve the K through four educational model based upon scenario one.
Do I have a second? Second of my eight? Discussion on the motion.
Just, just to reiterate, I, I understand the value of the K through four. I really, really don't think we can afford it. So I cannot vote for it across six schools. And it's not because I don't value kindergarten, because I absolutely do. But I, I think we are going to find it causes more problems than it solves.
I'm gonna hope you're wrong, but.
I hope I'm wrong, but I think.
I can, I, I appreciate.
Is it gonna be weird that I vote for it even though I voted for three?
No, you can still vote for it.
No?
Okay. It's, it's a new motion, just vote on this motion.
I just, you know, not, I, I just wanna reiterate that I really trust what our, our educators are telling us in terms of the benefits, and what our administration is telling us in terms of feasibility of investment. I feel that if it, if there was red sirens in terms of like not being able to fore it, forward it, we, that would have presented to us, and I, I think it's an investment worth making. For all of the benef, reasons outlined.
Any other discussion? Okay, so the motion is for scenario one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So that passes three to two.
Thank you to the elementary study committee for all the hard work, and thank you to the school committee for really deliberating around that. It's a hard decision to make. I will come to you at the next meeting with thoughts on a timeline for implementation. I will include budgetary items, I will include timeline steps, all of those pieces, okay?
I, I would actually like to make a motion that we do a very short discussion on timeline in one specific area. There is no way that you will ever be able to convince me that we can do this next year. And if the rest of the committee feels that way, I think, given that our public, given that our parents have gone through a significant amount of transition in the past three to four years, I think knowing whether or not there's going to be redistricting, is that the word that we use?
Yeah.
In how many months, what month is it now, October?
I don't know, almost November.
Almost November, in eight months, I think people would appreciate knowing if that's on the table or not. And I would like to make the motion that it is not on the table.
With him still bringing us the
Oh, yeah.
The details about when things roll out, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm, you can bring me.
But that it not be sooner than.
Yeah, you can bring me this scenario for next year, I don't, I don't care how great that analysis looks for next year. I just, I can't, I can't buy that our teachers, our students, our parents, everybody can handle, no offense, but a new superintendent who's, one of your goals is an entry plan. Right, like, opening a new school, we know a difficult budget season, what's, what's the other activity that you're working on? Oh, the elementary school study, and figuring out how to redistrict the elementary school. I just, I, I would think, and I think parents would appreciate knowing whether or not this is something we really are going to do next year or not. So with your permission, I'd like to add that to the motions.
So point of order, can we do that, because it's not a listed item on the agenda for voting?
Yes, we.
The, the agenda's just elementary study.
The ele, yeah.
I think we can make any motion related to it.
Oh, yeah, we did not, we were not specific, okay.
Joan, what is your exact motion?
That we direct him to bring us timelines that do not start any earlier than fall twenty twenty-six.
If I, if I may. Just, and, and I did not report here on the data, but just for the community to know, as you, and you to know, as you're deliberating over this, a vast majority of the respondents supported a longer timeline than next year.
I was going to ask that, so that, that is in the survey, is that true of the community and staff, or?
That is the overall community. I would say that there are more staff members than, than families that supported a quicker transition, but a majority of all were supporting a, a longer transition.
I think it's mostly what we heard.
Um, do you want a second on her motion for discussion?
Yes, please, can we actually ask, let's get a second before we start.
I'll, I'll second Joan's motion for the point of discussion.
I hear what you're saying, I, I just think it's nine months. We've just done this, the superintendent, who's the professional, is gonna come and, and give that to us, I, I think that's more than enough time. And I, I think that he also understands that assumption. I don't know that we need to.
I think what Joan's saying though is that the opinion isn't gonna change in two weeks with whatever he comes forward with, so to get it out of the way now, am I paraphrasing that?
Yeah, and so people at home don't have to wait another two weeks to make a decision, or a month. And Tim, if he has other things that he needs to work on, could perhaps wait, instead of doing it two weeks, could do it in a month or two months, and come to us with a timeline.
I would, yes, but I would still want to know the recommendation of the timeline on November thirteenth. I, I see the value in saying tonight it won't be any earlier than fall twenty-six, but I also don't want to delay us talking about when it could be, because there's a lot of work that needs to happen.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
I think it expedites things, I do just want to acknowledge that there is an argument for the rip the Band-Aid in terms of some of the professional implications, and I think we acknowledge that. I think that to Joan's point, overall, there's also a significant amount of teachers who understand like what kids have been through, and kids in this age bracket over the last several years. And I think, lastly, community buy-in's really important with a change like this. And so it's important that we acknowledge what we heard in that way, so.
I, I would echo that, that my initial thought when we started talking all about this was, I was all, I was team rip the Band-Aid off, that just get it all done in one year, the less transition, the better, it'd be a lot easier just to do it all at once. But now, going, listening to the forums and listening to the community, say, whoa, whoa, pump your brakes, you know, now you're telling me my kid's gotta go to a different school next year, like, and they're only gonna get six months to really like digest that. We haven't started planning, like, they're, you know, this, that, or the other thing, so. I have been a convert on that front. Teresa?
In the thought exchange survey, sixty-seven percent said yes to K through four. Does that mean the other thirty-three said the key buzzes, or were there some people who didn't respond?
The other thirty-three wanted scenario zero, so the question, the questions were, do you prefer scenario one, do you prefer scenario three, do you prefer scenario zero?
Yeah.
And so that was the sixty-seven, it was thirty-five and thirty-two, and then the rest were zero.
Although Joan, I am with you in thinking not to do next year, I am wondering if we want to have another survey go out just to say, hey, on October thirtieth, the school committee made this decision that we are moving to scenario one. Now, before we talk about implementation, we want to hear from everybody on your timeline thoughts. Because for the people who felt strongly of scenario zero, perhaps they didn't as seriously answer the questions on timeline, because maybe they were hoping we weren't going to do anything. And I don't know if them now knowing concretely what we're talking about, if that changes staff and, and community feedback. And I would be interested in hearing that at a point before we move forward.
I respectfully disagree, because I feel like we asked that question in the last survey, and I know it wasn't with the information that we had chosen a model, but it was there to answer.
The community has had plenty of opportunity to respond and share their thoughts on this, I, I will say, I, I do disagree with that.
Yeah, that's the only reason, because we, you know, with the forums, and, and we have heard, you know, the people that have come out that have had a strong opinion on it, that, that they have been pretty clear. And I believe probably some of those people who, who were the thirty-three percent that wanted the K through, to leave it as is, scenario zero, probably were some of the people who came out and told us, but if you're gonna do it, wait two years.
I would defer to the superintendent, and if that's a tool that seems like it's useful or necessary to allow that, but not, for not, for us not to decide that.
That, then you would vote against my motion. Because the motion on the table is to say next year is off the table.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about the second survey, that's what we were talking about.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, Kate, if we, if we do not support the motion on the table, an argument of mine for why I may not, I'm not sure yet, why I may not support the motion on the table, is to allow that additional feedback to be collected.
I see.
Any other discussion on the motion? So as paraphrasing the motion on the table is to say that doing this next year is off the table. Otherwise, we would still hear about the exact timelines, starting in twenty twenty-six.
The formal, yeah, the formal motion was Tim would come to us with timeline implementations no sooner than fall.
Fall twenty twenty-six. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye, because I want the feedback.
So that does pass three to two.
Okay.
No more motions.
No more motions. I am kind of glad you said that, I, I think I'm in the same camp that, I don't, what you came, I, I told you I was team rip the Band-Aid off, but I don't think you could have come back with an argument next meeting that would have changed my mind to wait a year.
And I truly, I truly did not have a recommendation in my mind until we went through this process. So I'm, I'm glad you made a decision, we can move forward, which is good, with the timeline, move forward with the Coakley project, and I think this is, this is gonna be good for the community. We'll message this out, other than my Friday communication to the community, so they'll have this information, the reasons why. And if there is a concern about the, the timeline, I'm sure they'll get back to me.
So when you come back on the thirteenth with the recommendation of a timeline no sooner than fall twenty-six, so we are now in that default scenario zero for next year for sure, based on this vote. So will you be able to give us some preliminary, what that looks like?
I will do my best by the thirteenth, I'm really focused on timeline. You know, the timeline will be when I will have to determine budgets for X, Y, and Z. When we'll have to, so I'll give you the timeline for when that might be, but I, I won't be able to give you all that detail.
Okay, that's fair.
Yep.
And before we move on to the next agenda item, I do want to also echo Kate, you know, thank you very much to the elementary study committee, to Kate, you know, really from the school committee side, you know, spearheading it, and all the administrators, and just thank you. It's, but it's a lot of meetings, a lot of forums, and data to wade through, and to appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Alrighty, so, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is the student services RFP update.
We have one of those happening, we haven't talked about this at all tonight. So just as an FYI, we have three proposals that came in for the student service RFP, which is fantastic. We have a small subset of the team that created the, they're non-cost proposals, we've not had the cost on them yet. We have a small subset of the team that created the proposal, the request originally, and they'll be reviewing them, I believe Friday we're meeting.
Friday, nine-thirty.
Friday we're meeting. So we'll go and we'll see and determine if it meets the actual proposal, and we'll rate them based on that. From there, the one with the highest rating, I believe, Sean, I don't know if you want to share this anymore, will be one that we go forward with.
So we'll rate them based on the criteria. If they're all rated advantageous or highly advantageous, then we move over to the non, to the price proposals. We look at the lowest price proposal, and I should say, while we're rating them, we're also rate, deciding whether those proposals met the requirements of what we requested, whether they're, whether, whether they're responsible and responsive. If they're deemed none of those, then it's unacceptable, and we can, we can eliminate that vendor. If they're all, then after they're rated, we open the price proposals, and then at that point, we look at the proposal with the lowest price. And then because it's an RFP, we have the ability then to decide that we recommend a vendor that may not be the lowest price, but that we recommend is the most advantageous for the district to go with. When you do an RFP process, you have the ability not necessarily to go with the lowest price, but you have to have some sort of basis for doing that.
And I'm so excited that we have, I'm really, really happy with this, so.
This is wonderful news. So if we meet on Friday, do we bring back the recommendation of the vendor to the school committee at the next meeting, or what does that look like?
Uh, we, we can, yeah, I mean, I think you need to know who's coming in, right? So we have to do that, along with the price and, and all those pieces. I, I don't know how that goes to procurement, I think it has to go.
Yeah, I think if the team evaluates it on Friday, I mean, it, it would be feasible probably to open the price proposals and make a full recommendation by the thirteenth, I would think.
Okay.
I mean, maybe we can just, we'll see how it goes when we get to Friday.
Yeah, can that be the goal, and then worst-case scenario, you at least give us an update on the thirteenth?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so they don't have attached their fees to their?
It's not the quote process, like we went through for the elementary study. So we're, we're able to evaluate on other criteria that we put out, and then you get the price. With the quote process that we did for the elementary study, we had to take the lowest quote, or start?
Yep.
Yeah.
Here, we get to look and make sure it matches what we need, and then say, okay, we're gonna open the price proposal based on what that one is. And if it's two, that it kind of meet what we need, we can decide.
Are you able to, like a menu, pick things that you may or may not want from what they propose? You know what I mean?
Some of the vendors asked if we would be picking only one vendor to do all everything, and I think we decided that we're gonna look at the proposals and see if, if some of, if some of the proposals appear to address certain parts of it, we probably have the flexibility to do that. We'll have to see what the prices look like once we get to them. But the RFP process, when you, when you do this process, you have to first do the non-price criteria and the rating. You don't get to look at the price at the same time, so then we get to the prices, and we then kind of have to weigh everything.
Understood. Understood.
Any other questions about that?
I think that covers it. Anybody else? I'm just excited that we have, that we have proposals at all. This has just felt like, you know, the, like, that picture of just the finish line getting further and further away. Just never thought we were going to get there. And I know it's not a finish line, but it feels like one. Alrighty, so we'll move to the next item, which should be very quick, is the long-term agenda review. So once a month, as per our policy, we look at our long-term agenda and make sure that we are capturing things appropriately. Obviously, there is one meeting in December, I mean, in November, and then two in December, and obviously further on than that. A few things from this evening, I think, will need to get added on to next meeting. So I do obviously recognize that, and I have a whole bunch of notes around what needs to learn.
Can we add the update on the Student Services RFP? Can we add, there are, we did have a middle school building committee meeting, and I do want to update you guys on stuff. So our, our next meeting is, I think, the eighteenth of November, but there's stuff from this meeting that should be on the thirteenth. And then I think keeping the update again on December eighteenth will be good, because we'll hit both of those that aligns with that calendar. That's a long way of saying just add MSNBC on the thirteenth. And it'll be quick, ten minutes.
Okay. Yes, we got the student, and then we also said we have.
Timeline.
Timeline.
Will you put question mark for vote? Because we might not vote, it might just be an update.
Oh, yes, that's, that's what that was kind of for. Alright, so in timeline for elementary school implementation. I love that it gives me suggestions that I can just tab right through, because my fat finger syndrome doesn't, it's a great one to type.
And just for the, the record, for December fourth, I added a strategic plan update, so I wanted to give some more detail on what we have with those. And we'll likely move the Sharon one down. I think it's going to be a little bit later.
Okay.
So then we can move the school year draft calendar, if we can talk about.
Yeah, I think that, because where do we have that? Somebody actually was asking, we do have it on December eighteenth? Perfect, yeah. I definitely have had community reach out already on that. Because people are looking to plan stuff. So, so right now, it's on December eighteenth, but.
Amory, I added our quarterly budget reports after our last budget subcommittee meeting, October eleventh, as Sean confirmed. So January twenty-ninth, April thirtieth, and June eighteenth will be the reports. And then Kate and I met with the SAC Student Advisory Council yesterday, with Mr. Luff and Dr. Gallagher. And I sent out an email to all of you, but they're coming November thirteenth, as you know. And then they're also going to come January twenty-ninth, March fifth, and May fourteenth. So I put that in the long-term agenda. And then if any of you would like to attend the meetings that Kate and I have with them at the high school, we're meeting with them December fifth, February thirteenth, and April tenth. That's all during when? So ten-twenty-two to eleven-eighteen. Lisa put those on our shared calendar. And then just a quick question for Mr. Luff and Amory. I know we signed the MOU, MOAs with Unit A and Unit B, but when are we actually going to see the full contracts and sign those?
We're almost done. So there's not Unit A, Unit B there, but you do have some to sign tonight. I think School Nutrition is there to sign in full. Almost complete with Unit A. We're just finalizing the, some of the old stipends that were in there, and some of the changes that were made over the course of the last four years in the contract. So we're, we're almost there. Jody and I will actually look at that Friday, and she'll have it to you shortly after that.
So the contracts aren't going on the agenda before we sign them?
Which ones are those?
This is School Nutrition.
Because didn't we just see an MOA, or did we, I don't remember. Did we not?
I have, I have to, let me check on that.
Okay.
You want to use one of the contracts?
I thought we saw all of the updates.
You saw the MOA for School Nutrition. I don't know if you saw the contract itself.
I honestly can't remember about that one. I know BNA, we did not.
I would, I would say, I would say hold off on those for now, and then I will get Unit A and Unit B out for you, and probably get them on the next meeting.
Great.
I think, Jody, we could probably work that. Yeah.
Alright, thank you so much.
Just so we have something to work towards.
Now that I have a little more time next, next week.
You don't have anything else to do, do you?
Sometimes the simplest answer is the best one.
And then just something that came in tonight, not that I expect us to schedule it now, but if we could just keep it on our radar, that we should schedule that workshop to talk about the three-sixty. Just because we're also very busy, and probably don't want to try to squeeze that in at the last minute.
Yeah.
Can that just be part of an executive session? Technically contractual.
Wait, part of the what now?
I said, can it technically be a part of executive session that's contractual?
We talked, we specifically just mentioned that, we asked.
Why would it be no, if it's listed in the contract?
Because it's a part of a.
Evaluation.
Evaluation process, which has to be public.
But it's also in the contract.
Yeah, but it's not changing a contract. We're not negotiating a contract.
I disagree, but.
We're evaluating.
Okay. It's not really written in the contract, but okay.
The superintendent, the superintendent has a contract, and we.
And part of the contract is that we do that. It's.
Yeah, as the open, that's why it's.
Executive session can be things related to the contract.
No, that's why, that's why superintendent evaluations are so uncomfortable, is everything has to be done on camera.
I mean, I'm.
Which we are currently on.
So, yeah, okay.
Right now.
Next.
Alright, anything else on the long-term agenda that anyone sees glaringly missing? Fabulous. As always, comments in there and let me know. And so that brings us to the next agenda item, which is the quarterly staffing update.
I'm going to give this to Mr. Manion.
So, thank you. This is an update on quarterly staffing, the first update on staffing for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And FY twenty-five, there are two documents up there. There's a memo, and there is a table. And I should say, we have one update to the table. I'll, we can discuss that as we get into it. This table is based on information that was utilized and distributed during the spring budget discussions. It looks back from FY twenty all the way through where we are today, with FY twenty-five, at the staffing levels for the operating budget. If you haven't looked at the new revised one, the only change that happened recently was we did approve a staffing transfer. I believe it was at the Oldham PAX program. They, we transferred two additional pair of positions that were not going to fill. They were having difficulty in finding them for an additional teacher in that program. So it lowers our overall FTE by one, because we're taking two pair of positions and transferring it to a teacher position. So that's, it's, it's all cost neutral, but it lowers our overall FTEs by one. So as of when we did this look at, look back, or as we did this snapshot of staffing, on the operating budget, we are staffed at five-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-eight FTEs, and the memo was five-sixty-seven-point-eight, but we, we reduced one more. I should say, I didn't mention this in the, in the memo, but we do have approximately eight FTEs on revolving funds. We have approximately thirty-two FTEs on grants. And at the moment, we have approximately eighteen positions which are vacant. So those vacant positions are included in this, because this is a, this is a look at all the staffing positions that we currently have. Not all of those positions are filled at this very moment. And the next important thing I would say is that we are, all of the staffing is completely within the budget for staffing right now. As you know, we just reported on our first quarter. We're showing a balance of close to a million dollars. We're completely within budget, completely within our staffing plan. If you go back to the first quarter projections, you'll see that we're completely within our staffing plan. And I would expect we would continue to probably see some savings there, as we have vacant positions. We're going to see time go by before these positions are filled. Sometimes even we see some turnover during the school year, so that's all to our favor. Looking back from FY twenty-four through to where we are now, if you look at the table, I'll just track through it a little bit. But the original FY twenty-four budget was staffed at five-hundred-and-fifty-point-seven FTEs. By the end of FY twenty-four, by the end of June, we had five-hundred-and-sixty-five-point-eight FTEs. So fifteen FTEs were approved during that, during last school year, throughout the school year, and added. When we built the budget in the spring, the original twenty-five budget was built with five-hundred-and-sixty-five-point-six FTEs. And that was an increase of fourteen-point-nine FTEs over the original FY twenty-four budget. And this was all presented at the spring budget discussions. And that fourteen-point-nine was derived from adding eight-point-three positions that were, some of those new positions added during twenty-four. It was seven-point-six positions were absorbed into the operating budget, because the S R three grant was ending, and there was one reduction. When we come to FY twenty-five, what we found was, so the budget had an accommodation. It had a reserve for some pair of positions that were not reported in the FTE, because we weren't, I, I believe, we weren't sure whether we would need those at the time, so they weren't necessarily added, but the funds were there. And as we got into FY twenty-five, we found that we needed those six pair of positions. So if you look back at the fourteen-point-nine that were added for the budget, eight-point-three were from increases during last school year. And when you looked at the, where we ended in June, we were actually up fifteen. So these other six were sort of staffed last year, and the expectation was, let's wait and see whether we need them, and we did need them. So once those are added, we're at five-seventy-one-point-seven FTEs, sort of as a baseline adjusted budget for FY twenty-five. And then since then, since July, we've done a number of these staffing transfers that have had the effect of actually decreasing the FTEs by four-point-nine. And there's notes for each of those, various situations where we've traded pairs, two pairs or two-point-seven pairs in some situations for a teacher. I mean, I have all the situations. Another larger situation was with the SPED IDEA grant. We mentioned in the grant report that we're taking two OTPT positions off the grant, but we're taking six pair of positions onto the grant. It's all cost neutral. Again, going back to the beginning, this is all cost neutral. We're all within the staffing plan. And I can go through the details of more of those transfers if you want to hear it, but that's how we arrive at our current staffing of five-sixty-six-point-eight on the operating budget.
Sean, can you clarify something? When you say the original budget, that's the budget as approved by town meeting?
Yes.
Right? So then, when we go to the, the change from the original budget, those would be positions that we added after July one?
Yes.
Okay, so.
But all I'm saying is that those first six pair of positions that we added.
Yeah.
There was budget for those.
Yep.
The FTEs weren't reported in the spring.
Right.
But the budget was there for those, so it didn't really add any cost to what we were seeing. But yes, it was added in FY twenty-five.
Right, so I'm actually going to go back for a second to FY twenty-four, because that was last school year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And that last school year was chaotic. So we have been under, and I'm clarifying this for the community, and I want to make sure people know that we have been adhering to that override pledge that we were under through last school year. And we had promised not to add more than five FTEs to general education in any one year. So if we're looking back at the original FY twenty-four budget, and then the actual, what are you saying, Sean, in FY twenty-four, we add it to FY twenty-four after July one? Is it the sixteen point, is that fifteen or sixteen? Fifteen point one. Fifteen point one. So that, as a reminder, was all for special education or ELE? And.
But clarifying, we were not under the pledge.
Well, no, even that is okay, because the pledge had the exemption for special education.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, but, but we weren't under it.
No, no, I'm trying to, I'm trying to explain, because I, I can see this very quickly spread like wildfire, and I'm trying to prevent misinformation. Not that you're saying, but it's really important we clarify this. So we had our budget for last year, and then what has happened the past couple summers did not happen this year. But what we saw happen previous summers was over the summer, Student Services and ELE would come to us and say, hey, because of student needs, we have more needs, and we voted a lot in July, August, and early September to add things. I am almost certain that fifteen-point-one was last summer, summer twenty-twenty-three, that we added those positions. So then FY twenty-five, which we're currently in, you're saying we always had the budget, but there were six-point-one pair of positions that when we were debating our budget, we didn't see, like, specified in the line item, right? So we had the budget, but our administration was doing the responsible thing, and, and waited to see if we needed it. And I know, Mr. Luff, we had this conversation with you, when you started to contract with us a little bit in the spring, on certain positions that Mr. Wells and Dr. Munoz, you were like, we don't know yet if we need. And Tim, you said, let's wait and assess over the summer. So you did that, and now we know that what was in the budget, but still being assessed, was six-point-one pairs that we do in fact need. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Still within the budgetary confinement of what we asked for.
Right, right, okay. Hopefully, that's clear for anybody who's following that discussion, because it's really important to me that we're transparent. And when we go to BBC in two weeks, and then to the FinCom the week after, I know this is one of their questions around hiring and FTEs and staffing.
I think it's important to know that one FTE doesn't actually equal another FTE, right, depending on the position. So a teacher FTE, for example, will have a higher salary than, than a pair of FTEs, so the numbers don't matter as much as the budget matters, if that makes sense, although it's.
I think everybody at this table agrees with you.
Yep.
But that is a conversation we have to have with BBC, how we're for staffing going forward. And then what is, if we look at the column, it says FY twenty-five actual as of ten-twenty-four, the four-point-nine in red, what is that, Mr. Manion?
So that's, so after the six pair of positions which were in the budget.
Yep.
And were there, they had, we had the funds to accommodate those positions. We just hadn't added the FTE. Then we assessed after July and agreed that those positions needed to be added. That sort of sets a new adjusted budget.
Got it.
Since that point in time,
Yep.
transfers of staffing have been approved that weren't originally in the budget, but were all cost neutral.
Got it.
And those transfers all netted less FTEs on the operating budget.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. And we are being very responsible in considering benefits and trading, which we started to talk about in the spring with JJ and Matt, trading a certain amount of pairs for teachers, and then you identified, we just did that again, for the PAX program.
Yes. Actually, we're just doing the package that way. So we're, and we're tracking how many benefits package we had, how many we're reducing.
And if we get this question on November fourteenth or November twenty-first, we will be able to answer that to our colleagues.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
I mean, another takeaway, if you just skip from the beginning to the end, if the original budget that was presented at town meeting was five-sixty-five-point-six, right now, yes, there were a couple different patterns, but we're at five-sixty-six-point-eight. So we're very close to the original. We're within one-point-two of the original budget.
And you said there's currently eighteen openings?
Yeah, and that fluctuates day to day, so that's just a snapshot.
Okay.
Currently eighteen, and that broke down, that was in the memo, but it was approximately seven-point-four teaching positions and nine-point-four pair of position, positions.
Thank you.
Any other questions, any other discussion on the staffing update? Thank you, Mr. Manion. Appreciate the update. I think it looks, I think it looks great. I think it looks great that we're, you know, looking to move, make those moves and being very judicious about looking at staffing as a more holistic view, you know. So really do appreciate it, because we, we're sorely missing that. So having said that, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda.
So there are two approvals on the consent agenda tonight. The first one is an approval of grants. This is a document that we shared with you last, a memo document, last school committee meeting that outlines the grants that we are looking to apply for, the major, major grants, what they are funding, and the timelines for them, which includes staff. If it's staff, professional development, whatnot, after approval of this, this grant document, I will then, with any major changes similar to the way you, we focus on operating budget changes, come to you with those major changes. So that is the first part, the consent agenda. Do you want me to do both at the same time?
And that is the idea of consent agenda.
And the additions, the additions were added there, so I know Dr. Munoz added one of the grants that we had talked about at the last meeting. Yep.
About that we got in August, and then we came into one, should be the next one.
Yep.
Was that the one Ms. Earlinsky got?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then the second is a approval of donations for the, for PTO gift baskets, for the wellness fair. Our PTOS, PTA's got together and have provided wonderful wellness basket, gift baskets. I do want to show the picture, just so people can see the picture of what they look like. And I'm very, we're very thankful to. And I'm very, very thankful to all of our PTOs, PTA's for putting these together for us. Those lovely gift baskets. So these will be raffled off at the Wellness Fair on Saturday.
Great. And there's still more coming, right?
And there's still more coming, yes, yes, they've all, yep.
So, can I make a motion to approve the grant applications for twenty-four, twenty-five school year, as outlined in the attached memo and the PTO gift baskets?
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
You could make a motion to approve the consent agenda, I believe, if you'd like.
Yep.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just a question, since this is a little different than we usually do it, would, in the minutes, would Donna reference the document, or like, copy the grant? Like, how would that information be captured in the minutes?
It would say the consent agenda was approved for the approval of grants, the approved donations, and you can list that out that way.
Okay.
Yep.
And we are trying to move towards more.
Which I'm totally on board with.
Well, and, and, and just a point of clarification, just for everybody, you know, if somebody really felt like they needed to discuss something in the consent agenda, that is the idea, that we can pull it out and make it a standalone item, and then that's why it is listed individually under the consent agenda.
Yeah, yeah, just since it's a little different, and I know there are some people who read our minutes, and they just, so we're trying to get.
Hundred percent.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passed five to zero. So that brings us to the point in the evening for our school committee agenda. Teresa, do you have anything this evening?
I, I know Mr. Luft mentioned it, but there is the Wellness Fair on Saturday morning, which I'm very excited about. We started talking about this idea in twenty nineteen, and then COVID happened. But Ryan Quigley and many people, who I do wanna just quickly tell you who some of them are, so the School Health Council and Impact Norwood have been working very, very hard on this idea. So Ryan Quigley is our Wellness Chair, and he heads up the School Health Council. But Connor Brosnan and Bob Ludd and Liz Barrett from Impact Norwood and Mental Health First Aid have, we, we could not be doing this without them. They have really been equal partners. Eli Norris from our Nutrition Services has been amazing, and is really pulling off a lot of stuff to help us on Saturday, so thank you to him. Anne Haley, who is on the FinCom, has also been participating on School Health Council. She will be with Tim on Saturday selling those raffle tickets. We have Kate Teague from the library, who's been very involved, and Amy Worcester, who is one of our elementary PE teachers, she's been very involved. Kate comes to School Health Council, I've been a part of it, that's been our core group. Mr. Luft has recently joined us since he's been here, and we appreciate that as well. So it's a small group, but it is an impactful group, and I really appreciate that group, and I encourage everybody to please come join us from nine to noon. There is a schedule of events that I believe Mr. Luft will go up on the website tomorrow, on Facebook page.
Open the websites and the Facebook page, and then also my community newsletter.
Awesome, so people can look tomorrow and Friday for more information about that. Kate and I, as I said, met with the School Advisory Council yesterday. I always really enjoy spending time with our students, and yet again, we have another amazing student group who everybody will get to meet on November thirteenth. And then, even though I oppose the majority's decision for the elementary study, I just wanna reassure all of you that now that that is the vote of the committee, I will do everything that I can to advocate for the resources that we need, and help it be successful. Kate?
I'm looking forward to the Wellness Fair as well. I just wanna admit that I am a very unreliable member of the council, because my children, that is their activity time, but I will be there helping on the day of, and I'm excited. There's gonna be a lot of cool stuff. Everybody enjoy Tuesday's day off, and please do your civic duty. I look forward to seeing people at polls, and that's it. Thanks.
We are heading into No School November, which is my least favorite time of the year. And so, which we kick off tomorrow with Happy Halloween, and a half day, for those of you, tomorrow's a half day, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so for everyone else who looked at the calendar earlier today and was like, oh my God, tomorrow's a half day, be careful driving tomorrow. I wanna say thank you to the Elementary, the Elementary Study Committee for all the work that they did, as well as for all, everybody who came out and answered thought exchanges and surveys and came to forums. It really did help. If you've been tracking the flow of this conversation, this committee has gone back and forth and back and forth. And so, all of the feedback really does help us make what we hope to be the best decision we made with the intent of having, of making the best decision. We continue No School November by doing your civic duty on November fifth, and then we honor our veterans on November tenth this year.
Eleven.
Eleven?
Isn't it eleven?
But is it observed?
Eleven, eleven.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday, okay, so eleven, eleven is, I thought, I'm sorry, I looked at last year's calendar and also freaked out, because I thought they had both Friday and Monday off. And they do not. So just a heads up about that, and I just wanna say thank you to everybody in the community. There have been so many really cool, kid-focused events around Halloween. It's just one of my favorite times in the community, as, because we really seem to come together as a community between, like, Norwood Day, right after Labor Day, and kind of like the winter break with, you know, all of the things that the community does and focuses together. I'm rambling, so I'm done.
David?
Nothing. I just have that, prior to coming tonight, I mentioned to a few people that I went to the event at the high school, was the, it was part hometown throwdown between the Norwood Fire Department and the Norwood Police Department, basketball, par unified game. And it was actually, it was, you know, I'm partial to the, to the blue in this case. But it was actually, it was, it was so much fun. I actually was not expecting how much fun it would be to see the kids actually playing. And every time, you know, someone made a basket, everyone was cheering, and they were just like, so thrilled to be out there with, you know, with their peers. The students were just, just absolutely phenomenal, so congrats to all of those students on a phenomenal game, and really sticking it to those old men who think they can still gain. And everybody have a great Halloween tomorrow. Be careful, be safe. I still believe that October, November first should be a national holiday, for known as Sugared Up Children's Day. I think every teacher would agree with that. Yep.
I wanna call that a PD day, John would have killed.
Yeah, No School November.
I think it is just the most natural day for a holiday. I think they need to somehow finagle that, but Election Day always falls the day after Halloween or something of that nature. But that does bring us to the end of our meeting. We do not need to come into executive session today, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And seconded by Teresa, and I will, I, wait, I always forget, do I need to poll individually?
No.
No, I do not, because we're not going to executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passed five to zero. Thank you so much. We will be back here on November thirteenth in this very room at seven PM.